Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting for Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. We are here this evening with City Manager Blair King. We have City Attorney James Haney, our City Clerk Christine Brown, Ben over on IT, and we have all council members here this evening. City Clerk, would you please call roll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Christine Brown, City Clerk. Please state for the record if you are present after I call your name. Mayor Matthews?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quetzland?
Present.
Councilmember Deeds?
Present.
Councilmember Fantroy Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Hytopolis?
Present.
Councilmember Morewaki?
Present.
Councilmember Schneider?
Present.
Thank you.
Safe. It's.
President of the House. The Black. States America. It's a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, it's. Like to read the Suquamish land acknowledgement. Hey. We would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is within the ancestral territory of the Suquoia people of Clear Salt Water, expert fishermen, canoe builders, and basket weavers who live in harmony with the lands and waterways along Washington's central Salish Sea as they have for thousands of years. Here the Suquoia live and protect the land and waters of their ancestors for future generations as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855. And next, let's go ahead and approve, oh, Councilmember Morewaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. I move to approve tonight's business agenda as presented.
A second?
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Morewaki, seconded by Councilmember Fantroy Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Nope. And with that, are we do have any conflicts of interest this evening? No? Seeing none, we'll move on to our one and only proclamation, presentation for a proclamation declaring August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month. Councilmember Deeds?
Great, thank you, Mayor. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation by the City Council of the City of Bainbridge Island, Washington, declaring August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month. Whereas emergencies and disasters can occur unexpectedly, posing significant threats to life, property, and the environment. And whereas local emergency managers, emergency managers across all sectors, community leaders, state governments, and the Federal Emergency Management Authority, FEMA, dedicate countless hours to developing preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation programs to protect the lives and property of all persons living in the United States and U.S. Territories. And whereas emergency managers across the United States and U.S. Territories are charged with establishing and maintaining the capabilities necessary to effectively direct, coordinate, and support emergency disaster response and recovery efforts. And whereas the mission areas of prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery align with the core capabilities identified in the National Preparedness Goal. And whereas emergency managers serve the nation by responding to countless emergencies and disasters each year, demonstrating commitment, compassion, and professionalism in protecting the public. And whereas the efforts of our nation's emergency managers have helped millions of community members across the United States recover, rebuild, and become more resilient in the face of adversity. And now therefore, I on behalf of Ashley Matthews, Mayor of the City of Bainbridge Island, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of August as National Emergency Management Awareness Month in the City of Bainbridge Island, and we invite all residents to pay tribute to our emergency management professionals, volunteers, and employees, and to recognize the contributions they make every day towards health, safety, and quality of life of our community. And accepting this is Annless Sage, our urgency manager.
Uh, no.
Sure.
Let's.
Can we reload it?
Actually, we do have a motion in here. Your turn.
I got it.
You got it?
Yep. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation declaring August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month, and to add this proclamation to the list of annual proclamations that may be signed by mayor without further council action.
Second. Made by Councilmember Fantroy Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Schneider. All those in favor? I.
All right. Good evening, Council, city staff, members of the community. Thank you for recognizing the first ever Annual National Emergency Management Awareness Month. As the emergency manager for Bainbridge Island, I'm often asked, what exactly is emergency management? And what is the role of an emergency manager in the community? Well, let me tell you, emergency managers are problem solvers. We're the ones that you call 24/7, 365 when an incident requires coordination across multiple services, agencies, or disciplines, even beyond traditional public safety. We help communities and corporations understand their risk, build resilience, navigate crises, and know what to do when disaster strikes. We are your neighbors. We serve rural communities and large cities. We advise corporations, nonprofits, and government agencies. We work in schools, hospitals, universities, and businesses. We are chief risk advisors for the communities, businesses, and organizations we serve. We are disaster professionals, helping to bridge the gap between agencies, businesses, and communities to build resilience. We connect resources, foster collaboration, and ensure that when crises happen, response efforts are seamless and effective. We are more than lights and sirens. We are the professionals every community needs, just as much as fire, police, and EMS. I am proud to be an emergency manager and to join the City of Bainbridge Island in recognizing Emergency Management Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we're on to public comment. In-person public comment is accepted at this time on any topic of public interest. Each commenter will have three minutes to speak. Public comment is not taken on individual agenda items during the meeting, so this is your opportunity, and we look forward to hearing from you. First is Pam Churchill.
Good evening, City Council. Earlier this year, you unanimously reaffirmed that Bainbridge Island is an inclusive and welcoming city. This was a response to inhumane immigration policies in the first and second term of the current U.S. administration. While this designation means our police do not have to cooperate with ICE, it also means they cannot prevent their actions. We have seen immigration raids by ICE agents masked and unidentified and without signed warrants across the country. This is terrifying to people in our country, state, county, and city. Bills have been introduced in the U.S. House and Senate, in state legislatures, and in cities to call for an end to this illegal and intimidating behavior. Currently in Los Angeles, California, the L.A. County Board of Supervisors have asked their attorneys to draft an ordinance, and I sent you that link. The recently passed House Bill 1.1 included a huge increase in funding for ICE. The ferry and the bridge will not keep them from coming to Bainbridge Island. Having an ordinance in place ahead of time can give our police and residents guidance and may serve as a deterrent. It does not need to be complicated. Simply stated, require that federal law enforcement officers within the jurisdiction of the City of Bainbridge Island be unmasked in uniform with official personal ID clearly visible and a certified and signed search warrant in their possession. We all know that Bainbridge Island has a history of supporting people. I am asking that you seven city council members, as a council form of government, act immediately and unanimously to pass an ordinance to protect all people who live here, work here, and visit here. It's hard to believe this is necessary, but we are in a never again moment. Please act with the compassion and urgency necessary to pass this ordinance. So I sent all of you an email this weekend and was very grateful to hear from John Quetzland, who may actually be the least vulnerable among us. We have women, we have people of color, we have folks whose spouses are immigrants, we have my own loving marriage. We're all vulnerable to this. Let's prioritize creating an ordinance requiring visiting police merely to act lawfully. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Peter Raffa, and we can't, we don't applaud just as part of, okay, Peter Raffa.
Three minutes is not a lot of time. I usually take three minutes to introduce myself, but all of you know me, so I don't have to do that. So I have been fundraising for about 40 years, so I do know about grants, and I know about donors and donor intent and donor wishes. And I had the pleasure of walking through M&amp;E Tree Farm on Sunday amongst the blackberry vines that I smashed down through the trails. Won't send you a bill, Blair, but that would be my donation to the city. Thank you very much, cleaning that trail up. But I also did some research around the deed in which Elizabeth Goodnell donated, I think in 2003, to the city during Dwight Sutton, Mayor Dwight Sutton's Open Preservation Act, where we got a bond pass for $8 million to purchase land so that we could have open space, the Open Space Project. We didn't have to spend a dime on M&amp;E Tree Farm because she donated it to the city. It was valued at the time in 2003, about $600,000. Part of the deed, her deed restriction was not to touch the land, not to build anything. There's no commercial things there. It was supposed to be for the benefit of the citizens and residents of Bainbridge Island. Trails were okay. You could cut trees if it was to the benefit of the farm, but you couldn't build any other structures on the property. So my understanding is that there's going to be a retention pond there, that there's Friends of the Farm build a tool shed there, that there's a good, going to be a food forest there. I have nothing against Friends of the Farm. I helped them raise money during the Matthew Coates Affordable Housing Project. I have nothing against Bainbridge Partners. I helped them raise money. It's the donor intent. And as a fundraiser, we honor the donor's intentions, and we're lucky she's still alive, living in California. She could be contacted to see if she would, you know, change the restriction of the deed so that you could build things on it. But I just wanted to be transparent and just honor the donor intent of the farm that she left the citizen Bainbridge to be open space and nothing to be built on her property that she left us. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention for clarity and transparency. So thank you all very much for your service and have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Peter. Doug Rowell.
I'm Doug Rowell from 12266 Kenneth Place. I'd also like to talk about the stormwater retention project on the M&amp;E. We're kind of at a go-no-go decision point, and this is the point where you need to look at, will the project achieve the goals you're looking for? And so I would prefer if you would pull item 5D from your consent agenda to allow the public and staff more time to look into the physical project. The original goal that I saw was here, you have a national pollution discharge elimination system permit, and you needed to build a stormwater management action plan, and this is the project that actually fell out of the funnel process, and you're down to this one price project, and you need to do this project to keep your permit. You need to get the grant to get the permit. But what it all amounts to is, what are you trying to do? If you go up there, you would see you got two roads, Kenneth and Air, each 250 feet long on a side of a hill. The houses on the upside of the hill, their water flows into the ditch. The houses on the downside of the hill flow away. So the project says we will collect the water from 18 homes. How? The water goes away from where the project is. How far are you going to build a public storm sewer system on private land? You got 250 feet of road, two roads, they join, you put a collection point, send it 1,100 feet down to a retention pond that you're going to build to clean up the water. So what water are you cleaning up? Herbicides on lawn, pesticides on lawn, nitrogen from fertilizers on lawn. Oh, water soluble, they'll go in the water. You're also trying to get the copper, the aluminum, the steel that come off of cars, plastic glass, and those particulates will be caught in the sand trap down in the retention pond. But the fluids that are important, the herbicide, the nitrogen, goes right to Manzanita Creek. It's going to, you're just going down a pipe. And what you're saying is you're going to put more recharge. You're going to put up like a 1,200-foot pipe joined with a 900-foot pipe, and what you wind up with is the water is going downhill. Boom. You're going to have less groundwater recharge, which right now it's dry. It's August. The more water you move off our hill into the creek and out to the sound in the winter during the rain, the less moisture you'll have today in August. So if you're trying to help the fish, you're actually hurting the salamanders. If you're trying to help the fish and you're putting pollutants into the groundwater, you just had your emergency management. We lose our Fletcher Bay wells. We may have to punch wells in the shallow aquifers. Please don't fill them up with pollutants. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Saboda.
Yeah, I'll be real brief. Just on the bike lane thing, I want to thank the city for starting the project down there at the end of Eagle Harbor. One of the things I was hoping that, because I don't want to go down there and get in the way of people and I don't want anybody else getting in the way, because there's a lot of traffic going on. It's great that they put the traffic light up today. But I was wondering if there's any way they can post progress photos or something along that lines, and then continuing on the whole bike lane thing, anything that can be done to start bringing more bike lanes with all these kids that are riding electric bikes now, a lot of them without helmets, which is pretty amazing. And that gets into the whole thing of education. And I wish there was some way the city could work with the schools to deal with education on how to ride a bicycle properly and how car drivers should react. The business of passing bicycles without, I call it, you should go over the line. I watched a kid one time with his dad riding on Fletcher Bay, the long straight stretch. I went around, you know, crossed the O line, went around. I watched a big, huge boat of a Cadillac behind me, and I thought, I wonder what this guy's going to do. He did exactly what I did. He pulled over across the yellow line, right when he was next to the kid. The kid fell. His head hit the yellow line. People don't realize that. And so just the whole thing, I wish somebody would look at the whole education process of bike riders and car drivers. So as for the leaf blowers, I'll just say, boy, I hope someday they get rid of the gas ones. I switch to electric on all my yard equipment, and I don't even need to wear headphones when I cut the grass now. Gas mowers for small lawns, I don't understand why people still use them. I know they're expensive, but I wish that would change, and I hope they can change that rule soon to somehow calm it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Benjamin Harrison.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. My name is Benjamin Harrison. I'm a resident of Rolling Bay and a member of the Environmental Technical Advisory Committee. I'm here tonight to comment on the draft groundwater management plan. There is nothing specific about the plan on tonight's agenda, but there is a pertinent, pertinent item on the consent agenda. I want to praise city staff for securing funding to help with stormwater recharge in the Manzanita watershed without getting into the specific design of the project and whether it could be improved. This is an example of how small targeted projects should do some of the work to protect watersheds against groundwater consumption and climate stress. Watershed-focused work is something that the city and partners should continue to pursue in other key stream systems. It's particularly important because of what the plan and groundwater model don't do. The 2025 model does not quantify changes in groundwater discharge to streams. By necessity, it also largely treats the island's subsurface as being laterally more continuous than it may behave in reality. I like to share a story of a small community that relied on years on wells dug into what the plan calls the sea level aquifer. With increasing demand, the water system dug new wells less than half a mile away, in which that aquifer was essentially absent, and they dug deeper to reach the next one. Individual watersheds may be more or less sensitive to actions that we take on a larger scale. It's vitally important that the city plan for monitoring and managing watersheds on a fine scale to maintain streams and the ecology they support, and this will require deep engagement with the community. I urge city staff to arrange additional opportunities to engage with and educate the public on the groundwater management plan ahead of the current schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Blossom.
Good evening, Council. Sarah Blossom. I am Chair of the Planning Commission, but I'm here speaking on my own behalf. And I just have a few requests and suggestions. The groundwater management plan, the conclusion in the summary and near-term action memo refers to modest growth assumptions. Please request that the consultants specify the total population growth figure that underlies these assumptions. When the Planning Commission reconciles the groundwater management plan with the comprehensive and Winslow subarea plans, it would be helpful if we could evaluate the plans on the same basis. The Growth Management Hearings Board just released its decision on the appeal of Mercer Island's comprehensive plan. I've read the opinion, and I think it has implications for our planning process. It would be great to have a legal opinion from the city attorney on how the Mercer Island decision impacts both direction from the city council to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission's current review of updates to the Winslow subarea and comprehensive plan and related code amendments. I think you should delay approval of a new contract with LMN until you've received the opinion from the city attorney, because it could mean that we need to change our approach, and I'm not sure how you could agree to a scope of work until you better understand if that decision will change things for our own process. If you do approve the LMN contracts, please remove Task 9.2.2, which reads, "Adapt the current incentive-based zoning system to remove incentives to simplify planning review, provide consistency, and standardize outcomes." A task to revise or amend specific items in the municipal code should not be included in the consultant's scope prior to the Planning Commission's formal decision that such revisions are the intended direction, because doing so assumes a policy outcome that the commission has not yet endorsed. Incentive-based zoning is required for a development right transfer program, as it is an incentive-based approach that would be used to direct growth away from our conservation area and into Winslow. Incentive-based zoning acts as a means of advancing specific comprehensive plan goals and policies and community values related to affordable housing, development right transfers, creation of community open spaces, and historic preservation. You may recall that last May of 2024, I asked this council to keep transfer of development rights on your list of priorities in anticipation of the Winslow subarea and comprehensive plan updates, and you'll see that a TDR program is part of the proposed post-adoption work plan. I want to put a bug in your ear about removing barriers for ADUs. We're doing so in our own code is great, but the most common barrier that people face are related to septic requirements. I think you should start to think about how the city could request the state reconsider septic requirements for small ADUs like the 480-square-foot pre-approved plan. They should not need capacity for two bedrooms. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Next, Hayes Gorey.
Good evening, Council. Hayes Gorey here on behalf of Wintergreen Townhomes. Two things I want to address on the agenda tonight. One is the consideration of final plat for Phase 2, and the other is the consideration of applying for the CHIP grant. So as for Phase 2, I think it's an opportune time. Just for a quick update on the project, straight from the horse's mouth, we're finishing up Phase 1, which is 17 affordable units and 13 open market units. All 17 affordable units are sold and occupied. We have sold six of the 13 open markets with one under contract, so we've got six more to go, and, you know, the market's tough. We all know that. But we're wrapping that up, and we're working hard on that. We're ready to jump across Wintergreen Avenue to go to Phase 2, which is 14 affordable units and 29 open market units. We're told by HRV that they have 25-plus applicants for those 14 affordable units. So the demand greatly exceeds the supply. Wish we could build more, but it is what it is. But we want to move quickly, especially on the affordable units, because of the subsidies that are lined up, the USDA loans, the, you know, down payment assistance, the self-help grants. We're told that much of that is available, not all, but much of it is available for this year. And who knows what, heck, who knows what tomorrow holds, much less 2026. So we want to get those affordability built ASAP. And so we just poured some foundations today in Phase 2. We want to get final plat so we can get the building permits and go vertical. So we're looking forward to that. As for the CHIP grant, it's been talked about a little bit before, but our team has been able to come up with a way to build for a very low cost per square foot. I'm not sure anybody can compete with us, which is why, as a private developer, we're able to do an affordable housing project like this. But nonetheless, you know, times are getting tight, market's tough, those subsidies may or may not be available this year or next year, what have you. So this CHIP grant would be tremendously beneficial to the project and would greatly benefit the affordable component as well, because the more cash that's in the project, the more flexibility we can have in terms of the pricing and the ability to actually get those low-income households into those units, whether it's lowering the price, whether it's a credit closing, whether it's buying down an interest rate, what have you. Because if we don't get those USDA loans in particular, and I think they're telling us we've got five lined up for sure, maybe more, so five out of 14 is not great. There is a Plan B. It's the Washington State Housing Finance Commission, but it's not as good as USDA. And so again, having the flexibility, having some funds in the coffers is really a tremendous thing. Construction costs have gone up as well. We all know that. It might even get worse with these tariffs. So I just wanted to put in a plug for that. And I did want to thank the city staff as well. I know getting final plat ready to go and the CHIP grant, and there's a lot of Ts across, Is to dot. So very much appreciate Jennifer Sutton and everybody else who's doing all that work for us, and thank you for your attention to these matters.
Thanks, Hayes. Next, Diane Ledry.
Hi, Diane Ledry, from Olympus Beach Road. I've been Director of Bainbridge Island Zero Waste for 15 years. Zero Waste is a program of Sustainable Bainbridge that educates the community on waste reduction, reuse, recycling, and composting. A few months ago, during a council meeting, I suggested what I'm about to repeat now, which is, in order to meet the island's solid waste goals and reduce recycling and compost contamination, there should be a staff position devoted solely to solid waste management, monitoring, and education. Later in this meeting, you will be reviewing the, quote, "efficacy of the disposable food, service ware, and waste reduction ordinance due to passage of the Washington State Recycling Reform Act," unquote. I was on the committee that created this city ordinance, and was one of the city's contractors, who met with food service providers before and after the ordinance took effect. I would posit that the state's recently passed law, this Recycle Reform Act, has no bearing on the efficacy of Bainbridge Island's compostables ordinance, which is Chapter 8.24 of the municipal code. In order to meaningfully address the efficacy of the food service ware ordinance, go to Chapter 13.28 of the municipal code instead, which is all about solid waste management. In this section, the city sets higher expectations, including what to pick up, how often, from whom, what education and reporting requirements are desired, and more. This chapter was created in 1989 or '90, when nationwide curbside recycling was in its infancy, and it still reflects the conditions of that time. For example, it says recycling will be called weekly. It does not list cardboard among the required recyclables. It does not list cardboard among the required recyclables, but it does list something referred to as polyethylene terephthalate bottles. Why hasn't this chapter ever been revisited if City Hall is so concerned about our hauler's performance? In fact, four years ago, Kitsap County Solid Waste Manager talked with Bainbridge's Public Works Department about doing just that. I was on the call because I was the city's solid waste advisory council representative. And I believe if that conversation had been from one solid waste professional to another, there might have been some revisions to the solid waste ordinance and improved waste outcomes that the city seems to be looking for. But nothing came of that call, probably because it wasn't in their job description. If there was a staff position solely devoted to solid waste, this section could be updated in consultation with the hauler and perhaps enable the efficacy of our food service ware and waste reduction ordinance. With a position that focuses 100% on the island's solid waste, we could also address the concerns and questions brought up in last month's council meeting about our recycling rate, the capacities of our three Kitsap County compost facilities, and the local diversion requirements laid out in the state's organic management laws. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Barbara Okota. Okota, sorry. Oh. Oh, yum. Thank you, Barbara.
Good evening, council members. I'm Barbara Okota, and I live on Cave Avenue. I'm on the Zero Waste Steering Committee and have been an active volunteer since 2014. I'm also the educational coordinator for Zero Waste. In addition to that, I've been a contract employee for the city in the implementation of the ordinance regarding food service establishments. I was also a contract employer with the city about Kobe's recent composting education product with Adam. And I've also participated in several waste audits over the years, some for Kobe and some as a volunteer at Zero Waste. So I have been elbow deep in waste issues on this island for quite some time. So here are some visual aids about waste contamination from National Science out. And let me just remind you that the acceptable contamination rate for compost is somewhere between 2 and 5%. One of these bags is from landfill. One of the bags is recycling.
We can't hear you because you're not in the microphone. Sorry, not weekend, but not the.
One of these bags is from the recycling container, one is from the compost container, and one is from landfill. Can you tell which is which? They're all incredibly contaminated and have to go in landfill. Based on years of experience of a number of zero waste volunteers at events, including the Fourth of July and the Rotary Auction, we know the importance of clear and consistent signage to help the public place their discards in the correct containers. These were gathered from three large toters, one of which I think had a compost symbol on it, but none of them were marked, and clearly their purpose was not obvious to the public. If waste reduction is a goal, it cannot be accomplished by a flyer or two every year. Education around waste needs to be ongoing and presented in a variety of settings. And please know, I am not knocking Adam, who has so many responsibilities. This is no knock on him at all. Please keep these concerned in these concerns in mind as you discuss your waste management reduction goals, because this is just unacceptable. I'm grateful for your concern about waste reduction and hope that you will be successful as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Chastity Malatesta.
I have a heart attack. I don't have a problem. Hi, I'm Chastity Malatesta, and I'm 11792 Penny Place. You can come over. I'm here just to talk about, tonight alone, between lunch and dinner, I received 11 and a half, I would say, because one of them was a comment, emails in regard to a little bit of outrage over the Winslow Plan. And my concern over the temperature and tone is that many of us have been on phone calls, Zoom calls, meetings, city meetings, or hosted town halls, where we've gotten provided so much good communication. So kudos to the city, one, for communication and getting families involved in the conversations at Woodward, at the library, at the city. And I feel some folks right now are feeling like they're not a part of a conversation that we started three years ago. And then when I look back on my notes, it's five years ago, it's eight years ago, it's 10 years ago, it's 15 years ago. And for families who maybe can't be in this meeting tonight, talking about growth is different than just sewage and poop. I think about poop all the time at my house, because I have three sons, and I have two little well sewage things, one so I can develop and build my house out if I choose to. The owners of the home that live there knew that whoever was going to move onto our property, which is close to a couple acres, that I might have the ability to be promote and to build bigger. And I wonder if Bainbridge, in all of its history and city council, there are homeowners that knew that we would have to expand and grow. We're losing Bainbridge Island School District from our economic growth, we're losing families right now, to more affordable places, and those affordable places are further out in Kitsap or across Seattle. And we haven't centered the conversation on our families. We've centered it on the infrastructure and poop. Hi, Topless, thank you, you're like the poop princess. I appreciate that. But also, in the scaffolding of that conversation, and I love Wintergreen, man, that was awesome, because there's other ways, it can be and and, it doesn't have to be no, vote this council out because we don't get our way. Or I got the cutest email tonight about save the corner. I don't really want to save the corner, I want to save the families that belong on Bainbridge. And I do understand why the corner is important, but I think it's an and 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 and, but we need to stay in the conversation and center on our families and growing Bainbridge and betting on the Bainbridge of tomorrow and not holding it to the Bainbridge of 19, well, whatever. Like, I can pick any year, because I found out this conversation's been happening since 1982. And as a result, in my notes, that means that we keep talking and talking and talking and talking and not actually doing and pulling the plug and committing. And so while I care about the poop princess and making sure that we care about our infrastructure, I'm caring more about the fact that we want to say we belong. It's part of our values on Bainbridge. And so can we do that in the infrastructure? Can we do that in the mixed ways we're looking at housing? Can we do that? We have campaigns and and places that are building on organizations to build families, and we want to stay in that business. No more rhetoric of hot and cold.
Thank you. Next, Lisa Neal.
Well, council, Lisa Neal. My printer broke, so I've got to read on my little phone here, unfortunately. My first comment was about the M&amp;E Tree Farm, and I was only vaguely recollecting this when I looked at the agenda, and then I heard the other speakers. And so I just want to sort of reiterate something. If if you have some reason that you are not acknowledging and following through on the deed that transferred the property to the city, then I would suggest that you state that tonight. I know this is on the consent agenda, I don't know if it's going to be taken off or discussed at all. Sounds like not. But you know, personally, I would not donate land to somebody who turns around and builds on it if I wanted it kept unbuilt. And I also am concerned about the notion that we're going to collect stormwater and then pump it out in the sound, eventually put in the stream and on the sound. I have this a little bit in a much smaller situation on around my property, we have ditches. And for years, I said, can't we put some, you know, can you bring us some straw bean berms and stuff, slow the water down, because it literally sounds like a waterfall out there in the springtime. Finally got that. But this this project, when you when I hear the comments and I looked at it online, it feels like a big rushed project that's not really well thought through. Is there any way that you guys can, you know, dig back into this and make sure it's actually going to do what you want it to do? And also look at, are we doing something that we promised not to do? Because I think that would be a real, a real problem. On my main comments tonight, I was going to make war about money. When I see a consent agenda that's this long, and it's got a million, $2 million on it, that concerns me, because I look at these items, and I know from paying attention that these haven't been discussed before, or I've managed to miss the one meeting when all these were discussed, you know? And I don't think that that tells me that you folks are not really paying attention to these consent agenda items. And then there are a bunch on the other agenda that I would have comments about, except that brings me to my next comment I have all the time, is you have too many things on the business agenda. There's not even time to to look at them, come here and talk to you about them, because there's literally, you know, this many, and I could talk about many of them. So first thing, look at the M&amp;E Tree Farms substantively, and are we supposed to be building on it as a community when we promised not to? Design wise, is it really doing what you want it to do? Because it doesn't sound like it. And then third, on the money thing, that's sort of illustrated by final point, is we get these grants, and then somebody comes back to us and says, we need more money, budget amendment on this this agenda item. Shouldn't we know what these things cost before we agree to do them? I say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Laura Lant.
Hi, I'm Laura Lant, living off of Hidden Cove on the north end of the island. I am also a city council candidate, full disclosure. My remarks will be compressed tonight, because a lot of what I wanted to say has been said already. To follow up on some of the folks talking about the M&amp;E property, my concerns are really financial and legal. The difference between a stormwater park and a stormwater pond might be everything to the language. And it appears to me in the the donors' wishes when they gifted this property to the city, parks good, ponds not good. And this seems to be simply a stormwater pond masquerading as a park. The second part of this is that this is a $752,000 grant that might be coming to the city, but there's also $223,000 coming from our swim funds. So that's just, is, do we have staff capacity for this? Do we really want to use our swim funds on this project? Okay, moving on to another item, this is all things Cooper Creek and Eagle Harbor Drive. These are agenda items 5E and 5L. I didn't really realize I'd be talking about emergency management tonight, but since it is Emergency Management Awareness Month, who knew? In a way, we should be grateful that the one way in, one way out scenario presented itself under controlled conditions. This is the perfect opportunity to call Bainbridge prepares into action to coordinate with traffic control, involve all the relevant stakeholders, fire, police, school, utility, transit. Everybody gets to plan and test our response on this. Let's make lemonade out of this lemon. Why hasn't that coordination happened? It's 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 still can happen. I'm just putting it out there. We have a whole cadre of flaggers. We have a whole cadre of people who have been trained to do what the police department has been doing before a light just showed up. Just just consider. My last comment is regarding the minimum notification requirements for civic projects. Because civic projects are about affordable housing, park projects and the like, those will will jump to the front of the review queue, and public notification and engagement becomes compressed, and that engagement is more important than ever. The 625 Winslow Way Project, which is the old police station, is a major civic project, yet public engagement seems very limited. The site could not be more central. It's visible to islanders, tourists, transit users, fires, wash dock, yet there's no public notification board on site. Bainbridge Island Municipal Code 216020 dot 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 requires notification to parties within 500 feet once a complete application is received. Lehigh, the Low Income Housing Institute, has said they will send notices. We will send notices, that's the city, once a complete application is received. But I don't know what Lehigh's standards are, it's unclear to me, and 500 feet around the project site isn't enough. I propose council discusses raising notification standards for civic projects beyond the minimum BIMC 21602. I ensure the public is engaged in the earliest, most robust, transparent way possible. Thank you very much for listening and letting me go over 39 seconds.
Thank you. Next, Pascal Schuback.
Good evening, everyone. Pascal Schuback, I live on Madison, but I tend to be everywhere. I wanted to talk to you tonight about a couple of things that really just help emphasize what we talked about, the proclamation and emergency management. I am an emergency manager, I work with Ann constantly. I also support Bainbridge repairs. My daytime job is focusing on 11 states and territories on seismic and natural hazards disruptions and the challenges that is. So basically catastrophic planning of really, really bad days. We have a gold mine here on the island. We are a set standard of opportunity and capability with the colleagues that I talk to and possibly self promote, because where I live is a beautiful place, and as well has this wonderful team of people and cadre of opportunities that come up. The nimbleness that we have in the partnership to be able to try new ideas in emergency management, test them, facilitate them, the volunteers that help support it, is a dream come true to most every emergency manager in the nation, maybe even globally, saying, we have a community of partners. A big shout out to Parks and the opportunity, we've just recently secured the Strawberry Tower, which is a 140-foot tower that's already permitted through the process and is available for us to add emergency communications, not just to the island, but to the region. It's a pass through to the whole peninsula, opportunity to share emergency information from the state of Washington Emergency Management Department during crisis. That capability, we didn't pay hardly a thing. That is an amazing feat. And I can tell you, emergency managers are jealous of that behind the scenes and going, you guys are very lucky to have that. It's this type of collaboration and capability is important to pronounce and to identify, but also recognize that it's being done in a way with very minimal cost, except for time and effort. And that's an important thing to understand, because during a disaster, the amount of financial challenges that are going to be faced, especially with the current administration changes and the focus and the mission change of FEMA, we need to prepare even more for those rainy days with a rainy day fund, something to think about in the long term, about resiliency in our communities. The senior center project, been helping a volunteer with that with Reed, is going, hey, let's build resiliency into the building, not only resiliency into the building for a disaster, but a resiliency to help K-Pod put a fiber node in the building to serve the neighbors. But at the same time, it's serving our community in disasters, because guess what? The big pipe of internet could still be there, it's already there in the building, and it's provided. The opportunity that you guys provided with the ordinance of K-Pod at the new police building, that provided us with the internet at the EOC that's not connected to the city network. So if a cyber event happens, that network shuts down, we still have the opportunity to communicate in emergencies without the challenges that are being faced. Because as Ann mentioned, our job is to come help during bad days and be able to do that and accomplish that. So we have a great team, we have great people, just be aware of those opportunities, because it's not shared as much, because most of the time you only talk to us in emergency management when we're having a bad day. So I appreciate the opportunity for us to have the proclamation and the support for the community, and just know that it's being shared across the nation in many ways and capabilities. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Smith.
I'm David Smith. I live at 3256 Weed Lane, but it's Paul's bow, so that's okay. Hayes said everything that I wanted to say, but you know, I'm older. But I did notice one thing on the regular business, that we need to be concerned about the naming of the senior community center. And I I hope you're you're listening, Mr. Quitsland, because you're you're even more senior to me, since I'm only 79. How about Wisdom Center? Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Those are all the folks who are signed up. Is there any, come on up, Melanie. And didn't we have anyone online this this evening?
Good evening, council. I wanted to just talk about a few things. I would like you to consider pulling the item on your changes to committees, it needs more discussion. I am a volunteer and have been a volunteer on E-TAC and trying to get the groundwater management plan done. It's been really difficult. We've only had one meeting in the last 14 or 15 months, because the council has starved the committee of reassigning members and new members that are available. Also, that a lot of the projects that were historically slated for E-TAC Also, that a lot of the projects that were historically slated for E-TAC were not given to E-TAC for review. I would like you to consider including maybe an environmental lawyer, similar to climate change as part of the group. Add groundwater management plan and stormwater updates as part of the projects. Consider language for other projects as the city evolves. Let's see, I have quite a few here. Consider having a committee with four instead of, four and seven instead of five and seven. It's really difficult to find specialized qualified environmental technical people to serve. A lot of them travel, jobs, young families. Because this is not a decision-making body, but an advisory, two does not equal quorum. Reconsider limiting to to no more than two from a family and maybe have the council consider or review that that once in a blue moon situation like with other things that you're proposing in there. See. Not sure about the mayor requirements added to the chair position. E-TAC should not be exclusively assigned to planning. The environmental technical is mostly under Public Works Environmental Issues. So there, you know, there's quite a few things that haven't really been properly considered that you might want to. Again, I'd like to express that finding volunteers is very difficult. And I think it would go a long way. You have a great deal of expectations from citizen volunteers, but I don't think you properly consider their circumstances. I don't think you properly can consider or show respect and appreciation for the volunteer efforts. That's how a lot of volunteers feel at the city. So if you would consider that, I would also, you know, I have more and I'll send an email. And I will stop because I saw a stop sign. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Okay, with that, seeing no more testimony, public comment is closed. And now we will move on to item five on our agenda, which is our consent agenda, and Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I move approval to consent agendas.
Councilmember Murawaki, continue.
Councilman Hytopolis would probably like to pull something.
Thank you. I wanted to pull, hold on one second here. Item 5D and 5J and 5N.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the three items mentioned by Councilmember Hytopolis.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Councilmember Hytopolis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we will move on to item 5D, which does authorize the city manager to accept a Department of Ecology grant in the amount of 752,000, which we heard some public comment on this evening.
So I just wanted to pull this. I I I'm not going to, I actually, I'm going to vote for this one, but I think that given the amount of public comment we had, it's worth addressing. And I don't think this is going to change the sentiments that we heard, but I do want to share, and I just want to maybe perhaps the city manager could correct me if I'm wrong or staff can help, but I I believe we did actually work through this particular project a number of times, you know, in in, I think, multiple meetings. And so I think we are aware of the project. I just want to be clear, even if it's disagreement with us, that this was something that was that was considered. And I think a lot of the issues that were raised were considered. So I just want to be sure, especially in light of the fact that I think I actually agree with the public comment that was made, that a lot of times things are on here that are very complex, that we haven't touched enough. I want you all to understand that we, and I shouldn't be addressing the audience, but I want the public to understand that we did actually spend a fair amount of time on this, as I recall.
Through the chair, then, what I'd like to have is our city engineer, Peter Krelis, can talk about this project a bit. A couple of things. Yes, this has been the subject of a presentation for the council. Would, I believe I could be corrected at the time, I think the Bainbridge Island Water Chamber Council with an endorsement for this project. But again, I think that was the origins of it, and Mr. Krelis can correct that. The proposition for the council is to acceptance of a grant in the amount of 752,000. It was indicated that there's a budget amendment. Because at the time the budget was presented, we believed that we'd have a million dollar grant and we were trying to make up the difference for that. But I think Mr. Krelis could talk about the the purpose of the project and describe the project accurately in terms of what it is.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you. Good evening, council. Peter Krelis, city engineer with the Public Works Department. Thank you for your your comments about the project. I'd just like to add add a few explanations about the purpose of the project. And so it is first and foremost, a conservation, environmentally minded, goal-oriented project with the strict goals of increasing groundwater recharge and reducing erosivity in nearby channels that are tributary to the Manzanita Creek and also bolstering the stream flow, stream base flow in the in the system. The the configuration of the existing drainage across the sites comes from the neighborhood to the east and it crosses the property on a ditch line that is right against Lovegren Road. And it shoots right through the property quickly into the Manzanita Creek system. And what we are proposing is to arrest that water as it deluges down that ditch. We collect it and put it into a recharge facility that will slow it and it'll it'll end up downstream as base flow, but on a much longer time scale. I acknowledge the the comments from the public about the deed restriction. Staff's reading of the deed restriction is that it is conservation-minded and supports activities such as passive recreation. And so, you know, with this project, we'll be bringing passive recreation to the sites. We'll also be providing reducing the vegetative monoculture that is at the sites. We'll be reducing invasives with the replanting plan. We'll be reducing erosion and sediment load to the Manzanita system. We'll be increasing the base flow strength and most importantly, we'll be providing a stormwater treatment that will actually catch catch some of these bad constituents that won't continue down into Puget Sound and Port Rutter. So.
I'll make the motion if there's no discussion. So.
Just out of that, we did, I remember now, if you look at the maps and stuff, we spent quite a bit of time on this and a lot of comment with some of the advisor committees and arrests. This was something that was quite adjudicated before here.
I move to authorize the city manager to accept a Department of Ecology grant in the amount of 752,000 for the Manzanita Stormwater Recharge Project and authorize a budget amendment in the amount of 223,000 Stormwater Management Fund Public Works.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Hytopolis, seconded by Councilmember Murawaki. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, we are 5J, which is adopt ordinance related to city advisory.
I'm just pulling this because I can't vote for it pursuant to previous discussion, and so I wanted to pull it out so that I don't vote on it. So someone else will need to make that motion. And again, I don't agree with a number of things, but in particular, I don't agree with the prohibition on married people in the same household being serving on a committee.
Councilmember Fantry Johnson.
Yeah, I don't see it.
It's J.
I'll make a motion.
There is no.
I make a motion.
Sorry. I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025 dash 22 related to city advisory groups.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Fantry Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Murawaki. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, that was six in favor, one in opposition. Councilmember Hytopolis. Next one is 5M as in Mary.
Yes. So finally, the one that I that I have concerns about along the lines of what was what was expressed about, you know, volume of information and the significance of the community and cost is 5M regarding modifications to the LMN agreement. I don't, I won't be able to vote for this tonight. I would ask that it be pulled and minimally pursuant to public comment was made along the lines of one of the reasons that it's not ready for prime time, that being that it would be good to have a legal opinion on the recent decision regarding Mercer Island and whether or not that's going to change enough of our responsibilities in the structure of what we're doing, that it should inform this. I also agree, not only in pulling, ultimately pulling 9.22, but honestly revising all of 9.2 to tighten as much as possible the consultant's involvement in making outright recommendations, modifications to code. You know, granted, we understand at the end of the day, we always vote for it, not saying we're going to be hiring them ever to make the code. But I agree with, and I'm actually looking for that, that quote, I messed up too many windows here, but I'm going to try to paraphrase it. Basically, what we heard from our now again, re-elected Planning Commission Chair, that there should be there should be no code revisions being drafted or recommended that are not first that aren't informed by decisions, recommendations by the Planning Commission or the city council. And we've gotten into so much trouble with this conference of plan in particular, with so much work and so much calendar time that went towards creating outcomes that nobody in the community, including the city council and the planning commission, felt that they had ownership of, and we've had to backtrack that. So the last thing we need is any more backroom consultant-led code creation. So again, I hope the council will consider at the very least that we might want to hear from a significant decision. I don't know if the city, I don't want the city attorney on the spot, whether he's noticed this yet and can give anybody, give us any summary of that, but my understanding is there is a, there was an important decision recently from the Growth Management Hearing Board that could relate to us.
Thanks, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor, oh, and then Councilmember Murawaki.
Yes, I'd like to speak to this briefly. There's a great deal in what Councilmember Hytopolis said that I fully agree with, maybe with some slight differences of emphasis and so on. I have communicated with the council at length after studying the scope of work as it's presented to us. I do think it does need further consideration. It's I I feel like it presents a bill of particulars from the consultants, and it needs the benefit of some discussion on our side of the table. And I've, I think we need to get several heads together that will improve the performance of all concerned. LMN are key players, and I do want to stick with their established expertise and their investment in our project. But we've got to find ways of working better with them, and that will involve some better understanding with the Planning Commission. And the council needs to be engaged in a way that we have not been. We have been kept in the dark for sometimes good reasons. But there needs to be more interest, I think, in transparency and efforts that will clear the air and avoid the speak, the the problems that Councilmember Hytopolis referred to. We need to know at the draft level, what has been worked upon already by staff and by LMN. And we need some interaction from the council and Planning Commission levels about just how best to do the work that needs to be done and how to do it as efficiently as possible. Because there have been some some obstacles to the proper collaboration. So I do think it's a good idea to postpone action on this. We're not voting anything up or down, I would say, tonight. That'd be my preference anyway. But give give all the details that are in the record in that scope of work, very careful consideration and discussion. We'll have a very positive outcome from that, I believe.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, not to belabor it. Thank you for bringing it up forward, Councilmember Hytopolis. It's a good topic of discussion, and I agree with most of the comments have been shared already, especially the last couple of things that the council member Hytopolis mentioned and was brought up by the chair of the Planning Commission, that really, it's really inappropriate for a consultant to be writing code for the city. I think that's just really way out there. And this product, this looks like it says it ended in June 30th of this year, so there'll be some, would there be a backup or just pick up where they left off? I don't know how that works, but this is not to say that we are not going to do this. We just want to take a look at this. And I'm torn both ways because we are under the gun to get this done. We have to lay it a bit. I believe they can help us get there, but we want to make sure that the role is clear and that they are really serving and trying to meet the needs of what the city is asking. So let's pause just for a second and discuss this.
Thank you, Councilmember Fantry Johnson. Oh, Councilmember Deets was first? I couldn't see the lights.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll join the the pause team here. I think we should delay approval of contract with LMN till we get an opinion from the city manager. I do not know the significance of the decision relating to Mercer Islands from the comprehensive, from the Growth Management, Growth Management Hearing Board, but I would think that this wouldn't be a big delay for us to get that review, just to make sure that we're we got ourselves covered. So I'm in favor of a delay for at least that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fantry Johnson.
I guess my question is, what does that do as far as the contract period? Is that going to set us back or what? How does that affect us if we just say, no, we are not going to extend your contract? Can we come back later and still have a contract with them? Or how does it work?
Yeah, through the chair, a couple of things. I've heard a couple of comments with the asking for the city attorney, who has discussed a little bit the Mercer Island decision. I think he's ready to just offer some comments. And then we can talk a little bit about the impacts then of a delay.
Yes, thank you. The Mercer Island decision came out August 4th, so we've had it a week. But it ended as a 68-page decision, so it takes some reading and digesting. I think the main things that I have taken from it and that I've discussed with the planning director at this point are that the decision says that when you are making decisions about how much affordable housing you need to accommodate, you need to look at each and every segment of the income levels, and you can't aggregate them and say, we're going to provide X amount of affordable housing, which is your total. You have to look and make sure that you provided the specific number or provided for, planned for, I should say, planned for the specific number of very low, extremely low, moderate, et cetera. So one of the mistakes that Mercer Island made was to aggregate those categories and look at affordable housing as a whole without looking at those individual categories and how they could accommodate. The second thing that I see that the decision tells us, and I I will follow up with a written legal opinion, but the second thing that I see that the decision tells us is that the growth board is saying that if you're going to rely on a publicly funded incentive program to provide some of the affordable housing that you're talking about, you need to fund that program. There needs to, and so you cannot simply say in your plan, okay, there's, we recognize that the land values are so high that in the city, which they are in Mercer Island and which probably applies to Bainbridge Island as well. You can't just say, well, there's, we're going to have to provide public incentives somehow. You have to actually have a plan to provide those public incentives to make it work. And then the third thing that the, that I think the board said is that if you are going to rely on an existing program, you are going to have to look at how that program has been utilized in the past and extrapolate that forward and assume the same utilization in the future. You can't assume that people are just going to all of a sudden up their their ability to provide affordable housing or their desire to provide affordable housing. So if it was only getting 20% or 30% of use for a program So if it was only getting 20% or 30% of use for a program before, that's the segment that you're, or that's the number that you're going to have to use to extrapolate forward as to whether you're actually planning for the proper number. So those are three takeaways that I saw in it. I think the other thing, just to, as an overarching comment, is that the Growth Board very clearly said the game has changed from, from what it was prior to the enactment of HB 1220, that you are now required to actually plan for and plan to accommodate affordable housing. And it's no longer the game of, we're going to encourage affordable housing and rely upon that encouragement to get it. One last comment. The city of Mercer Island was given a year to change its plan and respond to the comments of the board. And normally, the board only gives six months. And the reason they give it, gave Mercer Island a year is because they said, this is a complicated topic, and we're convinced that Mercer Island just made a good faith reading of what they believed the requirements were, and they were trying to comply. They just didn't make it, and it was, they acted in good faith. My take is that now that we have the Mercer Island decision, others are only going to get six months if you do it, if you don't meet it. So yes, Mercer Island submitted on time as well. That's, that's one thing to keep in mind, is they submitted their conference plan on time. So that's my preliminary takes. I'll look at the case and be providing more information on it to you. But that's where we are, and the Planning Director and I have had those discussions already as to how to respond to them.
Through the chair, in terms of responding to the potential delay, probably the most knowledgeable is either a planner Sutton or the Planning Director, Karnas can address that. I will say, and I would want to emphasize this, is that we want to maintain the continuity of LMN in terms of this engagement. They've developed a body of knowledge and would be needed. But in terms of refining the scope of work or how much delay the council can have in doing that, I think that would be, I'd have to defer someone else to talk about that.
Thanks, City Manager. I would support going, everyone else's wanting to delay. If, if it doesn't, you know, I don't like folks doing work and not getting paid for it. So if they've, you know, if they've done work, hopefully, we've paid them for what they've done. And then, because I see that if it's not a contract, which is fine, we have a contract with them. This is a, the word is, yeah, an amendment to professional services. So if we had professional services agreed to until June 30th, we have this gap now. So if they can figure out what to do within that gap. Otherwise, I would support passage with taking out the sections that Chair Blossom had mentioned. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. I, something new just occurred to me with regards to this conversation. So one of the main objections that my colleagues have had about the extending LMN is the part of the work plan being to prepare the parts of the code that we'd need to have revisions. And I'm not referring to specifics right now, but what I am just realizing was probably the Planning Director's intent is that some regulations were going to have to be changed. So it wasn't like the, that we were presupposing what regulations LMN would need to be directing, but rather that some would have to be, and therefore, we're getting the, the work plan set up even though the actual work that would be done by LMN, the specifics of it, has yet to be determined. So I just wanted to throw that out there if there's anybody, you know, if there's any. I mean, I guess I would favor moving forward with this because it, I don't think we're locking ourselves in. I, I understand what my colleagues are saying. I don't say that you're wrong either. This is just one of these tough decisions. So I think I will go ahead and support this as written or depending on, you know, something else that's being proposed.
If I may.
Chair.
Anyways, through the chair, and I address your comments through, and just know the proper procedures to address the comments through the chair. There is potential that we could, it would be a rush, but we could place an item on the study session for next Tuesday to talk about the scope. And then after that discussion, come back and subsequent meeting. And again, we would be asking that you approve and agree with LMN. And we want to assure you that from my perspective, LMN is not making any policy decisions. And it's going to have to react to decisions directed to it from the City Council. We could come, it's going to be a little bit rushed, but put it on the study session for next Tuesday. And then, or, and that would probably be the quickest, I could think, that we could turn around and minimize any gap. And it's already been identified, there's been a little gap in.
And then we could address it next business meeting.
That would be the idea.
Okay. I would support that. Would, thumbs up for so general. And then first Deputy Mayor had his, and then Council, and Councilmember.
Yes, I'd just like to say, I, if, if the Planning Director would like to address this, I would like to hear. No, no, that won't be necessary right now. But I do think we have an occasion in the monthly meeting of the Steering Committee with three members of the council and three members of the Planning Commission to do some exploration of how, how we can get the best out of this process. I do think we should be, should not be delaying very long, taking action. But there, I think there are things that could be changed for the, for the better in the scope of work. My close reading of the scope of work shows that there are many references to code implementation and to a process that is going to involve several different parties before it's completed. I simply want to know where we stand now, how far we have, what, what we have in the form of draft ideas from both planning staff and the consultants. So that we know what many people will be interested in, in seeing carried further. I'm not suspicious about it. I just want to, to have some curiosity satisfied. And getting started, I think, on Thursday in our Study Steering Committee meeting will involve planning staff as well as the council and the, and the commission. And that'll help us, help us to prepare for a useful discussion in the study session as well.
Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Hytopolis.
Yeah, I want to make up just a really quick high-level comment, which is that, you know, it just, it concerns me when we have that, you know, we're using the word delay over and over again. There's some concern expressed about, can we do this? Is it okay? And, and then worry about, what if we look like we're suspicious? And, you know, this is our job. Our job is to do this well. And it's not our fault if something's in here that we don't think reflects what we think is a good process. And I just, you know, one of the problems we just keep having as council, it feels like, is not being willing to ask difficult questions and even criticize. And that is our job on behalf of the community. So bottom line is, I want to say that I do read this as, and I don't know if this is where, where Deputy Mayor was going or not. It wasn't quite catching whether he is, also has concerns that, yes, multiple players will be involved. Inevitably legally, the Planning Commission will be involved, will be involved. The question is, what order is that happening? What, what amount, who's doing the discretion? What's the timeline? There's a big difference between whether something's going to be prepared initially by consultants thoroughly and then put, you know, given to Planning Commission at a point where they have hardly any time, and then we're up against our deadlines. Versus there being broad policy conversations that then inform a recommended language from, from the consultant and then gets reviewed in a plant, you know, in a public forum. So I'm only going on at this right now because I want to be sure that what comes back to us. If it's just next week and then we're expected to vote the following week, that, that it's, the concerns are understood with regards to, we need to understand the order in which things are happening and who's really making these sorts of preliminary policy. Yeah, they're not decisions, but the recommendations that will preclude other policy options and so forth. It's a significant role. So I hope that, that that's the kind of data that we're going to get back. And again, I don't feel that this is a delay. This is a request for a better contract.
Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, well, that, we have some direction, and we were moving on to council announcements. Oh, whoops, we'll pass it first. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Dietz.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I tried to give you a heads up earlier, so. So, yeah, so we can, council members can pull items, which is what Councilmember Hytopolis did, or we can see them approved, that is, items in the consent agenda, and then ask for a follow-up discussion. And I'm, I have two items tonight that I would like to do that. The first is item 5E. We've already approved it. But I would still like to have a conversation. This is to authorize the city manager to approve change order number two to the construction contract with Red Side Construction to incentivize the early completion of Cooper Creek Fish Passage Project $48,000 Storm and Waters Fund. Why do I want a discussion? Is when council approved this in April, we were given explicitly a three-week closure timeline, and that's not what happened. And so I, I want to give the city manager an opportunity to speak on that and kind of how did we get to this point?
Okay.
What I could do, I know that Councilor Dietz has also a question about, what was on five?
Yeah, I was going to say, do both just.
Oh, well, I do have, okay, I was going to do this sequentially, but, but I.
Perhaps I could during the manager's announcement, address all of these.
Okay, and then there's, the second one is relating to, okay.
A point of order. Since the consent agenda was passed with those items, with the exception of the ones that Councilmember Hytopolis called, they've already been approved. These, just understand that, these have already been approved and should have been properly pulled prior to the motion being considered.
Can I respond to it?
Um, so I think that's a little bit of a, we're not going to be discussing it. I think so, that will be, but they are going to be things that the city manager can address in his report.
If I may. I, I wanted us to discuss this. I asked, I discussed with the city manager to pull it, and he asked me that I not pull it. So I did not pull it, but I wanted it for discussion. Now, whether that's done now or during the city manager's report, I don't care. But I do want a discussion of these items. So the second item is 5L. Authorize the city manager to enter into, in our local agreement with the Bainbridge Island Fire Department for financial support of additional resources to manage emergency response during the Eagle Harbor Drive closure, $38,000, $38,500. This is money that we are spending to give to the fire department. So I, I wanted to discuss some information from the city manager on 5E and 5L, whether that's done now or during the city manager report, either would be fine.
Thanks, Councilmember Dietz. Okay, seeing no more lights, let's go ahead and vote on our consent agenda. We already did. We've done that. I'm lost. I don't know where we are after all this. So now we're on to council announcements? Perfect. Okay, council announcements. Councilmember Marlowe.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Matthews. Had a meeting with senior public art committee last Wednesday, and also many of us, city manager and the mayor got to turn shovels at the Erickson Community Project. Speaking of affordable housing, 18 units that are actually going to happen. And a lot of heavy stuff is in council. I want to bring up something that's going to be a little more light and fun. Mentioned several months ago that I attended the Bainbridge Island Museum of Arts, Beamer Bash, and their theme was 60s attire. Well, I wore a 60s outfit that actually had hair that matched mine when I had hairline. A tie-dyed shirt and a peace symbol and bell bottoms and Birkenstocks. And one of the co-chairs of that event suggested I put that up as an auction item. And so it was an impromptu auction item, and the item would be that I would wear that to a future city council meeting. So I'm announcing, I tell me that the September 2nd meeting, I'll be wearing that. And it was Deputy Mayor Quitsland's brother, Dana Quitsland, who was the high bidder. It was, it was competitive, but the $1,000 went to Beamer. I don't know if they really were supportive of me, I just want to see me make a fool of myself. But here it is, and it's a wonderful thing that that added more to our arts and that wonderful facility.
Thanks, Councilmember, Councilmember Dietz, and then Schneider.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, just a couple of things I did. Both August 6th, I attended the Puget Sound Resilient Economies Group in Seattle. This is basically a regional meeting. It was at the Seattle Public Library where we discussed impacts relating to heat dome events and wildfires. And we, it was a great opportunity where we were able to share information among jurisdictions as to what our respective jurisdictions are doing with these risks of wildfire and heat dome. So I, I'm joining some group that will continue this conversation. So be, the conversation will continue. And then we also had, a number of us, the Erickson Community, Erickson Community Project, is that what it's called? Had a groundbreaking and on Erickson Avenue. It was great. It's, it's always such a, you know, it's just such a wonderful time when you're actually groundbreaking for affordable housing. What was it? There was, someone made a quote about, this is what optimism is, you know? So it was, it was wonderful. So I just wanted to state that, and that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider.
All right, I also just have a fun one. So we had the National Night Out last week, and maybe this is in the TMI category, but I got kissed by Officer Whitney. I set her up to it. Anyway, it was, it was a lovely, it was just a really lovely event. And I heard after the fact from some of my neighbors and their kids that they loved it and couldn't wait to go back again next year.
Thanks, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, a few things. First, midday today on my way home, I detoured a little bit to go down to the head of the bay to just take a look at the present state of work going forward there. And I had an opportunity to speak with the supervisor of the, of the work. He was passing out popsicles that had been given by, given to, to him from one of the neighbors. It was, it was really nice. And talking a little, a little bit with him, he said that I, because I imagined a process of creating the concrete replacement for the inadequate culvert through a process of building forms and all of that. No, he says, it, it will arrive ready to be dropped into place. And this is likely to happen sometime in the coming week. So they're, they're working hard to prepare for that installation, and that's going to be a big event. I hope we'll have some notice. Not that there should be a big crowd on hand, but because too many people fit on this space. But no, it was, it was exciting to hear that. I wanted to mention also that the Planning Commission met last Thursday on August 7th, a special meeting devoted to the work in progress on the Winslow Subarea Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. Our consultant, Joe Tovar, had developed a very detailed series of stated meetings with, with, you know, the work to be done in those meetings. And this was just one of the things that was a little disheartening about that meeting. I invite you to catch up with the, the work of the Planning Commission because it's very important and it's very difficult. The Planning Commission converses more than making decisions. And they hemmed and hawed, I thought, and did not really focus promptly on the details of this elaborate schedule. There were just doubts about this and doubts about that and other ideas and so on. So that, I hope that we will move beyond that and get more focused on getting the work done. The other thing I wanted to say is that each Planning Commission meeting begins with a period devoted to public comment. And within the meeting, Planning Commissioners emphasized how important it is to them to provide time and an elastic amount, elastic amount of time for public comment of all sorts. Well, they got public comment of all sorts. Some of it was over the line, and I thought embarrassing. I hope that. I hope that, uh, people will observe decorum and be more respectful of the work of the planning commission and the heavy burden that they are carrying. Uh, because, uh, there are people who just love to spout off and, uh, it just isn't so helpful as other things that could be said. And, um, just want to get that out there for the public's benefit and our own benefit. Because, uh, uh, we have a need to hear public comment. But the more constructive and focused it is, the better.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I'll go fairly quickly since we're a little behind schedule. National Night Out was absolutely amazing. It is, you know, it's something about it. The kids come out and the families and the cotton candy, and it seems to get better and better. It is just such an opportunity for us to engage with, as Chastity was talking about, families. And so it just was really important. Um, HRB, congratulations. Uh, I got to, I'm an expert shoveler, getting to be really good at that. It was just great to see that coming to fruition. Uh, and we had our Kitsap Public Health District, uh, meeting last week where we appointed a, after the resignation of, um, Dr. Gibb Morrow, we appointed a, um, Dr. Herbie Huber, who is going to be our interim health officer for Kitsap County. Um, he's a professor of emergency medicine at UW. And he, uh, just a really, really, really qualified and great, great doc. So looking forward to working with him. And then I had a little bike to town, um, from Linwood Center, a meeting at the marketplace with some citizens and some volunteers from Squeaky Wheels. We met at the marketplace and then we bicycled down to the closure site, uh, where we talked for a while. And then we went on to TNC, just to show folks how easy it is to do that. And it was a great experience. So definitely going to do it again. I've been riding my bike everywhere. Um, it's really cool. Speaking of the closure, I had the opportunity, I drive that way home from work, so I took it at three something today and saw the light for the first time. But usually the time that it gets really crowded is four, so I got in my car, so I could go that way and drove back. And it was actually moving today. I was surprised with the light because I was a little worried that the light would stop things. So, um, hopefully hear from you all about what you're seeing out there, if that is the case. That is very encouraging. Also, something about the contractors who are doing the project that, um, I, it took me a while to figure out that it's a local Bainbridge Island company, Redside. They're right here. Daughter goes to BHA. I mean, they are local as local can be, and they are really working hard to get us out of the situation that we've gotten ourselves in and to get the work done for the community. So, um, as much support as we can give to them, that would be great. And I think that, oh, okay, one more thing. This weekend, uh, I work at a yarn shop. And, um, we all know Church Mouse Yarns used to be here on the island, an iconic yarn shop. And there's another one now in their spot called La Mercerie. And there was a big festival in Seattle where a few thousand folks come from all over the world and a few thousand vendors and then lots of folks. Well, they all, many of them took the ferry over to Bainbridge Island and spent the day here. And the amount of things that I heard while I was over in Seattle at the convention center and people's videos and just our, our town, our island just showed itself really, really well. So it was a gorgeous place. Knitting and fiber arts are back again and, and we are, we are the spot for all things creative. So it was just really cool to see. That, that's it. Okay. Um, and? City manager's report.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I have a variety of things. And as mentioned, I was asked to comment on a couple of them. First of all, I'd like to comment on the item that the council approved. And that's to provide for a, a financial incentive for an accelerated construction, uh, time for the Cooper Creek Fish Passage area project. And I want to thank the council for doing that. Let me provide a little bit of background. When the Cooper Creek project was bid, it was bid with identified at 80 working days for construction. Uh, fairly standard and it was bid at that. Uh, when the bids were received, there apparently was some understanding that there's the possibility that there might be a three-week closure, uh, at that time. The council awarded that bid on April the 8th. When that bid was awarded, the council was not, the potential for closure was not highlighted for the council. I didn't highlight it for the council because I didn't pick up that there might be a closure at that time. We were very pleased with the bid amount and, uh, we were focused on that piece. From April the 8th to the commencement of construction, which was in July, uh, it was identified that the closure would be lengthened in a period of time. Staff worked for several weeks to identify alternatives for a shorter closure period, but could come up with one. Primarily the reasons for the need for the DTR deal with the minimal width of the right-of-way, the environmental conditions around the right-of-way, the depth of excavation that's required, and the need to protect a high voltage power pole. Uh, that's been explained to me. And we are going through a post-mortem to figure out how we got to this point where I was surprised, council surprised, and the community was surprised. However, our objective is to accelerate the construction schedule. Although the base contract does provide 80 working days for the contractor, project was bid in that way. The deal was agreed with those provisions. We're using a tool that I've used in the past and has proven to be successful to provide a financial incentive to the contractor to accelerate, uh, the work. What this is, is we are proposing that, uh, we would provide, uh, an incentive up to $1,600 a day, uh, up to 30 days for every day that, uh, the contractor beats in terms of the agreed-upon, uh, construction period. So the contractor has a financial incentive to do that. The contractor was generally aware that, uh, the council might take this action that has taken and has been given, already undertaken steps to begin to accelerate, uh, the construction's schedule. So we think we are hopeful that, uh, it will result in a shorter construction period and a shorter, uh, detour period as well. I just will say that, you know, when the project is done, it is going to be permanent. It will be done and it will be a, a lifelong permanent improvement. And we do hope that to accelerate the schedule. The other item before the council related to this was item five I, uh, which was, uh, in agreement with the Bainbridge Island Fire District to provide, uh, cover some additional costs related to, uh, their response for emergency purposes during the construction period. The council is no, under no obligation to, uh, to take this kind of action. But it was taken, uh, out of a recognition that from my experience, if the fire department would have been a part of the city structure and a project like this was going to cause, uh, staff to be adjusted and changed and impact upon the budget, would make that internal change. Because the fire department is a standalone special district, we are agreeing to make that change to cover those costs related to this project with them. And I think it's the right thing to do. And again, appreciate the council doing that. With regard to emergency response, uh, it has been in the weekly update, I believe it's on the website, but I'm not sure, that the, uh, working with our emergency management coordinator, the evacuation routes have been updated with the fire department and with Kitsap Transit. Kitsap Transit has agreed in the case of a major need to provide fast ferry service, uh, to help evacuate the south side of the island. The fire department is working on a fire equipment-only, uh, access points to increase now access to the south and also other evacuation routes. And again, I think the maps, I, I know they're on the weekly update, but consultation has taken place and evacuation routes, uh, have been updated. Um, and encourage people to take a look at those. I think that covers those two items. I also wanted to mention of, is that on this, um, concurrent that we are going to move away from Granicus. Granicus is the name of our software platform that we use for the preparation of the agenda and of the minutes. Uh, that contract expires December 31st of 2025. For those of us that work intimately with Granicus, uh, we are disappointed in its performance. I'll put myself there at the top of the list. I hope it's okay. I mentioned that the city clerk also, I think, joins me in that disappointment with Granicus. Uh, the city clerk has identified another product named Civic Plus. Civic Plus is widely used also in cities. It has all the same functionalities of Granicus. Uh, the city of Kirkland uses, uh, Civic Plus. I want to mention it because, um, there will, it has all the functionalities of Granicus for the end user in terms of looking at the minutes of the meetings. But it will be a slightly different look. Uh, so it will be a change. And I want people to know that it's going to look different, uh, roll around in January. All the functionality will be there. It's just going to be the change. And it'll take probably a little while for people to get used to how to find their favorite, uh, meeting recorded and, uh, look at the video. It does work better on handheld devices, uh, Civic Plus does than Granicus, so we're looking forward to that. And again, it is slightly cheaper. Uh, speaking of roads, our sensitivity to roads, our annual road, uh, work for resurfacing is scheduled to begin next week. Cars are going out to the fronting property owners. What time next week will begin, I'm not sure. But the locations are, and again, this has been approved already. Sportsman's Club between high school and New Brookton Road, Baker Hill Road between Blakely Avenue and Lindwood Center Road, and Larry at Luke, how Larry Luke got in there, I'm not entirely sure. But, uh, that will begin, uh, next week and the notices are going out. Um, and also finally, the Internal Traffic Operations Committee, uh, is, after considering it several times, is recommending a four-way stop at Fowler Road and Sunrise Drive. And the estimated installation of that will be in September. Uh, so that was, and the Traffic Operations Committee is an internal committee that is designed to look at things, uh, against traffic standards, not be subject to political pressure. Uh, but they feel that the warrants have been, uh, now met to justify the installation of additional stop sites.
Thank you, City Manager. Now, uh, one last thing, because you said Traffic Operations Committee, I had a kudos for Hannah. A citizen reached out, he has been reaching out on Miller Road issues for a while. And, uh, Hannah facilitated a meeting with, uh, him and some of his neighbors there, uh, yesterday. And so when I was following up, he used words about Hannah like, um, championing. And she's picked up the ball and run with it. And, um, just really, really, really grateful for her. So I just wanted to say that on the dais, um, to Hannah. Uh, Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Some questions for the, uh, city manager and Reed and Charlie. Sorry to make you hang out so long. Something that I mentioned to you and maybe perhaps some of the other folks, we want to speed up that construction process. And so a suggestion that I gave to the city manager and public works director was, you know, we have daylight hours, they could work later. Maybe they need a noise variance. They can work on Saturdays. These things, you know, can hopefully get this thing done faster. You don't have to quit at five. And so I know that, is there going to be a, I think we discussed some sort of way that we can, um, create those, uh, noise variances and allowances to have that on weekends and, and other times more advantageous for construction?
Yes, there is, and that will be. I will say that, uh, right now, and I don't know, the last I heard, if some coordination is required with, uh, PSE, I mentioned that there's a voltage pole that's right there on the site and some works require with PSE to, uh, raise the height of the line to, in order to get the big cranes in, that will be dropping the prefabricated, uh, uh, components in. So there's some coordination there. I, I believe as soon as that coordination is done, that, uh, they'll will be sprinting then to the finish.
City manager. Okay, oh, sorry.
Just a very quick, I, I just want to say thank you, City Manager, for picking up those items that I, I brought up. And I do look forward to hearing the post-mortem, uh, that you refer to, kind of how did we get? No, the city doesn't like to be surprised and I don't think the community likes to either. So look forward to that.
We are moving on to our regular business agenda. We made it. Sorry about that, senior center. First item, review senior community center, 60% design and confirmed naming policy.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'm just going to go ahead and explain why this item is in front of you. Uh, the city entered into a memorandum of, of understanding for the redevelopment of the senior community center. Uh, the, that plan calls for the senior center to develop plans, uh, for the, uh, redeveloped project. Uh, at some point in time, a parcel will be created that will be turned over to the senior center. Uh, the senior center is responsible to raise the funds and the money to, uh, construct the new facility. Because the current building is owned by the city upon the completion of the new building, that will be turned back to the city then for long-term, uh, maintenance and care of the building. And the, uh, internal operations of the senior center will continue as they can do now, just a much nicer and expanded facility. To, because of the eventual ownership, the building will belong to the city, the agreement calls for check-ins at 30, 60, 90% plans. This is the check-in and 60% plan. Uh, I think it's going to be very positive. Uh, the director of the senior center, Reed Price, and their architect, Charlie Wenslow, is here to present that 6%, uh, check-in and show you the plans. The other component here is the senior centers, I mentioned, are responsible for raising funds. And as a part of that fundraising effort, uh, they will be, uh, offering the possibility of various, rooms within the senior center, uh, to bear names in exchange for, uh, a high level of donations. The basic provisions that are being proposed, that the names would be, uh, in place for a 30-year period after the building reverse, the city and the senior center wants to make sure that the city will honor, uh, the policy of the names that if someone should come forward and that will continue for basically that 30-year life, they can explain there's, that there's some outs. I will say too, that there is a city naming policy, but it's somewhat different. It envisions streets and parks and large buildings than our piece. I'm not entirely sure if that's what the senior centers are thinking about in our discussions, but mostly things like meeting rooms and hallways and pieces like that. But again, as a way to encourage people to contribute with money. And I would turn that over then, if it's time for could for a period of time, uh, through the chair to Reed Price.
Uh, good evening, members of the council. Charlie Wenslow, it's a real pleasure to be here, give you an update on our design. Uh, I'm going to give a very brief presentation, uh, to give you an update. We've completed now the schematic design phase, the initial stage of design. Last time we saw you, we were at 30% design. Now this is our 60% design. Uh, we've been focused on getting the building program and layout figured out. Uh, and also focusing on the exterior of the design, uh, which I'll show you some renderings that were just finished yesterday. We are working with, uh, Public Works and Engineering to keep them appraised of the design of the building with the goal to make sure we have a facility that is efficient and easily maintained, uh, over the coming years into the future. Also this week, uh, we're going to be going to Planning Commission Thursday night for hopefully our site plan review recommendation. So we're really looking forward to that. And this is a great chance to meet with you in advance of, uh, us going to Planning Commission. One other item, um, that was mentioned earlier from one of the speakers is that Reed and the senior center have been working hand-in-hand with a variety of island organizations because this facility is much more than a senior center. It's going to be a community center and serve a very broad spectrum of folks. If we could, I would just love to jump into the slides. What I would like to do, I think everybody here probably hasn't had a chance to look at these. The site design remains, uh, in the location we saw previously in the Center of Waterfront, uh, park located on the current center of the senior, senior center. As I mentioned before, the new focus of the building will now be from the north from town. So we're essentially making the building much more visible, uh, to the public. Next slide. Uh, we've done quite a bit of development of the floor plans. I'll gladly answer any specific questions, um, if you have them in a minute. Next slide. And as you can see, it, it almost looks like a computer card. There's a lot of stuff inside that building. And a lot of, fulfilling a lot of community needs. So we'll now jump to the next slide. And these hopefully are going to be easy to see, easier to see on your computer screen. So we now have renderings that show the look and feel of the project. This view is from, um, June. Um, do I have that right? I always get the streets reversed. You can see the existing playground to the right and the new entry courtyard, uh, into, uh, the upper entry of the senior center with the multipurpose hall, uh, on the right-hand side. Next slide. This is the view from Waterfront Park as if you're standing close to the Pocock Center. You're seeing the new thrift store on the lower right where the bicycles are parked. And on top of that is the outdoor terrace. For events in the multipurpose hall, you can come out onto the outdoor terrace and overlook our beautiful waterfront park. And then additionally, next slide please. Moving around the building, this is now looking up from the eastern side of the park. And we're seeing the new library room, kind of a glassed in room looking out onto the park with an outdoor terrace. Next slide. And then again, a little bit closer in view, looking into the multipurpose hall and the outdoor cafe. Not the outdoor, the cafe space, which sits immediately behind this courtyard space. And the next slide. And then this is the lower entry, again off of Waterfront Park off Brian. And the important thing is that the building is going to have prominent entries from both sides. And you'll actually be able to have a really nice connection from town to water, as we mentioned in our prior presentation. So I think that's it. And Reed is here to add any other details.
Yeah, the other, the other part that was mentioned was the request to have assurance that as part of our fundraising, we are able to reach out to folks who might want to have a naming opportunity. When you have a, an opportunity, when you're trying to raise money, having clear goals for different campaign levels is a good way to inspire people to participate deeply in fundraising. Having the opportunity for someone to have the, have a name, they could go to a higher level. They could also have their name attached or the name of someone they loved or someone in the past. Like leaves a lasting legacy, which inspires people to give it a level that they might not otherwise. It offers some momentum. When you start to offer this kind of an opportunity, other people say, oh, I'd like to be part of that. And of course, they don't give simply so they can see their name on the plaque. But it does make donors, especially large donors, feel valued. And they want to have the opportunity perhaps to highlight something in a specific room or a program or a space because it has meaning to them. I realize the city has a naming policy for buildings that you own. What I'm asking for is in this case where you will not own the building until it's completed. You will, as part of the acceptance of the deed back to you, acknowledge that in the course of our fundraising for the building, we did make commitments to people to honor them or their family members or some other thing through a naming opportunity. And as is spelled out in the policy that was sent to you, they don't have carte blanche to name something. The activities or, or programs or areas will be reviewed. They'll make sure that they are faced, you know, are in line with the mission of the senior community center. And in the case of somewhere where someone wanted to not have a, to have a name in perpetuity, we would require that we consulted with the city before we did anything like that. So our current plan under the memorandum of understanding is that when we complete the building and deed it back to the city, we have a agreement with the city to occupy the building under the conditions of the MOU for 30 years with two 10 year extensions. So our request here is that you would honor our naming policy during that first 30 years. At which point you could rename the building or rename the, the room or whatever it is that there is that we're talking about. So it's, it's an opportunity for us to raise the money to give something to the community.
Thanks so much, Reed and Charlie. So the outside, obviously the plans, the landscaping, everything that I'm seeing is unbelievably beautiful. But the value and the magic is on the inside. What the senior center has done for me is unimaginable. So my 80 year old parents, I moved here maybe two and a half years ago. My mom's not friendly and so are social. She was not before she moved here and joined the senior center and she now has so many friends. I see her out, I'm like, oh, girl, you know, she's like goes to Coquette and they go here. And they, I was away, we were at some conference, something for her 80th birthday and I was feeling bad because I wasn't here and no, they threw a party for her. So there is so much that is going on there that is just unbelievable. So thank you for all of your doing for the community. As far as fundraising, I was a little nervous when all of these campaigns with capital campaigns were coming out at the same time. And low and behold, the community has stepped up as I just, you know, as they and really supported all of these projects. So it's been amazing to see. I've been thinking lately that a lot of the folks who do support these projects are getting older. And so we really are not going to be able to keep going to these same wells. And so this is just my ask for our younger folk to get that, who can to really start trying to step up a little bit. And, oh, one thing, laundry. This is, so I've been wondering if maybe there's space for laundry facilities. The folks at the Marina don't have laundry and so they've been asking about that for you. So I don't know if that's anything that we could talk about in terms of this project. But anyhow, I'm so supportive of this and thank you. Who wants to, just we're going to go down the line.
Yeah, so it looks beautiful. Thank you so much. It's currently coming along. I, I wanted to weigh in briefly on the naming policy. When I first heard about it, I, I thought I would take a position on it, on naming the whole building. I think rooms and everything, you know, of course, that makes sense. And I'm not going to take a position on it. It is something that you, the endeavor that you are, that you are taking separate from us, even though it's on city property. And if we don't like the name, when it comes back, we can change it. I just want to give you feedback from somebody who went to a state law school. How it felt to me when a big donor gave a large enough donation to name the entire school after him. And for, you know, in perpetuity, it's named after him and it didn't feel great. So I just, I just, it's just, you know, unrequested feedback from someone who went that. But naming the whole building after somebody can feel, I think, off putting sometimes to the rest of the community that houses it. So I wouldn't suggest it, but I'm not going to interfere with it and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Hi, Reed. I wanted to, I guess, suggest for a lower level donation, like myself. If you would have, you know how they do the bricks with the names on them? Maybe just a small area where I could get my name on a brick. And I could donate and say that, you know, I was part of that because, you know, I was on the committee there for a while. Yeah, so I think if you want to get more lower level donations, that would be a way to do that.
Hey.
Councilmember Dietz.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Reed and Charlie. It's great, wonderful. This, this is so cool. Yeah, the senior center is a force in itself and, and you've come, you've stepped up notably recently in an issue that I read, we have talked about. So I thank you for what the senior center has done to the, for the community can continues to do. So I am very sympathetic to the naming policy. I mean, you need to raise a lot of money and, and we don't want to get in the way. And then that, and I'm sure you will use excellent judgment on that. Concur with the, the laundry. Thank you, Mayor. I had actually forgotten about that, so thank you for bringing that up. But also, you know, the, the old police station clock. I didn't see that in the rendering, so do we have a spot for the clock, you know?
We're going to find a spot as, as I mentioned to you, and it's not, not in there yet, but.
Is it a secret or?
It's a secret.
It'll be in the laundry.
Yeah.
It's the timer for the washing machine.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to seeing that.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Schneider and then Murawaki.
I, thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything substantive to say. I just needed to say, it really looks great and this is important. This is super important to the community. I don't have any relatives who are making, taking advantage of it, but I sure as heck plan to one of these days. I'm way past due from an age point of view, but it, I think about it. And so one of these days I will be there. And just on the clock side of things, I thought we were going to be able to put the clock back where, on the corner where it came from, just saying.
Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. And I'm sure Councilmember Frank Johnson would agree. It's a, I enjoy coming to the meetings. I actually look forward to being with your vibrant group. And I just want to share with my colleagues, this, this is a really tough working group. They take all of their stuff seriously, stick very tightly to an agenda. Their, Reed really helped on that as well. And they've looked at this very carefully. There's been a lot of considerable discussion and thoughts given and so you can see some of the thoughtfulness in the design so far. So I think it's a, it's just really a wonderful community project. You two should get kudos for everything you're donating to it. So thanks very much.
We have a motion here, a recommended motion.
I'll just make the motion, thank you. I moved to confirm the senior community center 60, 60% design and naming policy.
No second.
A motion made by Councilmember Dietz, seconded by Councilmember Murawaki. All those in favor? Thank you, Wolf.
Mayor, for housekeeping purposes, we probably will be bringing to you on a future agenda, resolution number 2301, which is the naming policy. We think we could easily incorporate your direction into that. And then we want to make sure we have that buttoned up.
Thank you. All right, next we're on to consider planning commission recommendation on ordinance 2025 13, unlisted uses.
Yes, Planning Director Charnas will bring this. And this is an item that originated, at least concept that the city council has referred to the planning commission. And so I'll come back to you for final action.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, City Council, Patty Charnas, planning and community development. Before you tonight for your consideration is an ordinance that the planning commission overwhelmingly recommended for planning, for, excuse me, for city council approval regarding identifying a process to bring an unlisted uses through a permitting process. You gave original comment and direction back in April 2024 when the city was grappling with a truly unlisted use, namely a crematorium. The staff in the planning commission worked on a permitting process to use the planning commission as the body by which people could bring truly unrelated uses that have no relationship to existing uses published in our zoning table through a process by which the planning commission would determine the correct permitting for that unlisted use. The planning commission held a public hearing. There were no public comments, but importantly, the planning commission gave this substantial thought. And I want to thank the planning commission, in particular then Vice Chair, now Chair Sarah Blossom, who made sure that not just current staff and planning directors, but future staff and planning director had true clarity about when this applied. We know that this doesn't happen very often at all. It's only happened once, it's been three years here. But it's important to have clarity in code for now and for the future. So I recommend that you approve it and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Director Charnas. Would anyone like to make the motion? Councilmember Fantry Johnson.
I moved to forward ordinance number 2025-13 to a future meeting for approval.
Second.
Great, that motion was made by Councilmember Fantry Johnson and seconded by Deputy Mayor Quitzlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing no opposition, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which has authorized the city manager to consult with Wash Dot.
Yes, the next item deals with the intersection of Winslow Way, specifically eastbound and State Route 305. Our city engineer, Mr. Corrells, has a presentation on this. Just to summarize is that with Washington State ferries making permanent the approach to the ferry terminal, the turn pocket that is currently on Winslow Way eastbound at 305 is obsolete. We currently have a variety of no right hand turn signs. They're to prohibit people from making the right hand turn and they are fairly ineffective though in their total mission. And they also are ugly. We have been asked if we could make improvements. And Mr. Corrells will talk about the improvements that are proposed and what the steps would be going forward. And we have one visual laid for you.
Thank you, Blair. Good evening again, Council, Peter Corrells, city engineer. Public Works Department and the Traffic Operations Committee have been looking at the alternatives for reuse of this right turn lane on Winslow Way. As was mentioned, it is cluttered with ineffective signage, which is directing current eastbound traffic or ferry bound traffic to make a left turn onto 305 and go up to High School Road and turn around and get into the line. The, the main purpose of the signage that is deployed out there, you know, the Public Works and in concert with Washington ferries is to reduce the line cutting by people in the right turn lane. And it is proven to be ineffective. So we are proposing some alternative augmentations to the lane configuration there that makes better use of the space and also carves out a dedicated bike lane for bikes at this facility. So what you see in front of you in this image is the closure of the right turn lane. Being occupied by some concrete planters and more clear permanent signage. We are proposing to add the green bike lane paint with green symbols. And as a, an ingress for bikes to get up to the front of the queue. And we'd like to dedicate an entire bike box for bicycles at the front of the queue. And indicate to the vehicles that they're, they should wait behind the bikes. And this way, when a light turns green, bicycles are, have the first cut at making their straight left or right turn movement. And this feature also in concert with the signage we proposed should prevent any of the common accidents in the right hook where the vehicle makes a right turn and smashes into a cyclist coming up besides them in the bike lane. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much the proposal. We're going to be making an application with your concurrence to Wash Dot. It'd be just a right away process where we would take in additional feedback from the Wash Dot engineers. And they're also, you know, doing analysis of the intersection, timing and lane configuration. So I hope it can be a collaborative process with them.
Oh, hi, sorry, my microphone has broken. Councilmember Dietz.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And then thank you, Peter. This is, this is great. Yeah, I think as we know, this intersection's been kind of problematic and I really appreciate what that we're moving forward with this. And plus it sounds like there's going to be some conversations, how to improve the, the whole intersection. Because right now it's just, just not very effective for anybody. So I, I've just noticed that there's times when the lights, like no one's moving, you know? And, and it's like, but there's all these lines of cars, but no one's moving. And it's like, you know, there's something wrong there. So that's not related to this intersection, you know, what you're talking about. But if we can combine that with, with this, that would be wonderful. So I, I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion. I moved authorize the city manager to consult with the Washington State Department of Transportation for revisions to State Route 305 and Winslow Way eastbound right turn lane to better accommodate non motorized users.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, but we still have, I see Councilmember Schneider's lights on.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, thank you so much for this. I really appreciate thinking like how to use this space. In looking at the, would it be possible to put the, the picture back up for just a second? I was just noticing the planter boxes and wondering if they could go on the other side of the bike lane. Just to create that little tiny bit of separation between the, you know, where the bikes go and where the cars go. I don't know that it will make a huge difference from a safety point of view for just a short little piece like that, but it might. And then maybe more, more importantly, it just sort of is the, the first little step in our community where we use, you know, the planter boxes as a safe separation, the way that is done in Seattle quite a bit. So I don't know, is that something that is a possibility?
It's a possibility. I think my first thoughts about that are, so if we did put them adjacent to the, the travel lane, the cyclist would have to turn on the right side of the, the planter boxes. And if they were going to And if they were going to try to make that left turn movement to head north to the STO, they would kind of be jumping out into the bike box area. And so we had to think about that to make sure that, that wasn't a total surprise to a vehicle that might be waiting there. And
Yeah, I mean, you probably wouldn't want to have that last box out there, right? You know, you might want to pull that one back or something. Anyway, just for consideration, because I just think it would be really great if we saw that, if folks on the island started to think, oh, that would be cool. Let's try to do that on our street or something like that. Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Schneider. Okay, all of those in favor. Oh, sorry, Councilmember. I thought that was for the, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, next we are on to I eight D. Review the efficacy of the disposable food service ware and waste reduction ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, the council asked the staff to review the Recycling Reform Act against Bay Ridge Island's Code, Chapter eight point two four, and compare the new Washington legislation dealing with intending to reduce waste and increase recycling against the city's current waste reduction ordinance. Staff has conducted analysis. Our climate manager, Laura Reiser, has a presentation for the council and can walk through our analysis of the two pieces of legislation.
Thank you, City Manager. So my name is Laura Reiser, the Climate Sustainability Manager. And I have one table that I hope can come up. And apologies if it's kind of small for folks in the room. I don't know if you can zoom in a little bit. So this is the one slide we're going to talk through. And I want to just note, this is by no means cover all the requirements or details of the act. The Recycling Reform Act was recently passed by the state and is very large and comprehensive. And there are about five other states who have also passed similar acts, which are also called extended producer responsibility. So my intent is just to cover some highlights about comparing the Recycling Reform Act and then the city's disposable food service ware and waste reduction ordinance. So the top four rows I'm really going to focus on. On the left column is the Recycling Reform Act, which is Senate Bill fifty-two eighty-four. And on the right is the, is the city's ordinance. So when we look at the intent, which is the top row, we can see some similarities. For the Recycling Reform Act, it's really looking to increase recycling rates and reduce waste by holding producers, and I want to mention here, it says food packaging. This is all packaging and paper products, not just food. So it says food, but it really is all packaging, to be financially and operationally accountable for the life cycle of their products from design to disposal. If we look at the intent of our ordinance here for the city, it really is to reduce petroleum-based plastic waste from food service and lodging businesses. So there's a similarity there in terms of reducing waste. But there's a little bit of a additional intent with the Senate bill. The target audience here, I just want to touch on as well, for the state's act. When you look, I took a look at all the definitions of the producers. There are many different definitions of the producers. So these are just a couple of examples. If you purchase at a retail establishment, the person that manufactures the item is the producer. For packaging used to ship the item to a consumer, the producer is the person that packages the item to be shipped to consumer. And for, for paper products, for example, that are magazines, catalogs, or telephone directories or similar publications, the producer is a publisher. So the state doesn't define the producer of packaging as one entity. It's many different. So all of that's written into the act. For the ordinance, the target audience really is the food service and lodging businesses. So there's a, there's a big difference there. One of the key questions I was looking at are, do, are food service businesses considered producers? Because there might be an overlap there. But what I found in the definition is that the, the food service businesses may fall under the de minimis producer and be exempt. And they fall under that under two scenarios. One, a de minimis producer means a producer that in their most recent fiscal year introduced less than one ton of covered materials. So they would need to know that and show that. And then the second is that they have a global gross revenue, not including on-premise alcohol sales for the prior fiscal year of less than five million. So there is a threshold at which food service businesses would be exempt from the state's requirements. And that's where the city's ordinance would then come into play to cover for a similar intent. The requirements on the third row, I, sort of, if you look on the left column of the Recycling Reform Act, requirements below the overall review list just some bullets. So again, the producer is who's impacted. And that is defined in the, in a lot of details in the act. And they, producers, when you are triggered in art one, you have to join a producer responsibility organization, pay an annual fee. And then the intent is to design packaging materials to improve waste reduction, reuse, and recycling outcomes. If we look at the city's ordinance, it really does not mandate or restrict the packaging producers. The PRO, the Producer Responsibility Organization, it's going to be a new entity that is going to be a nonprofit that sets and collects the fees and funds Department of Ecology's costs. They're going to implement and fund program requirements. This is a very large statewide effort. If we look on the right with the ordinance, our city code is not involved with producer responsibility organizations. And although a known investment in infrastructure may increase compostable materials, there is also going to be a state advisory council to represent interested parties with an equity subcommittee. And again, our ordinance doesn't have a connection there with the, with the state advisory council specifically on the Recycling Reform Act. The Department of Ecology is going to have a big role to play in this, to oversee program activities and compliance and enforcement. And then residents, the, the idea is that residents will receive reduced rate for curbside and recycling services. And the service providers, the waste haulers, will need to register and with and report to Department of Ecology and then collect, transport, sort, and process recyclables on the statewide collection list. And then the end markets ideally is to receive responsibly managed recyclables. And there'll be remanufacturing of recyclables into new products. So that's a very quick overall of an overview of a very sort of complicated and big act that the state just passed. And so after looking at this closer, I think the two actually go hand in hand very well together. But this is just up for you guys to, to consider. And I'm thinking, what else? Then basically, the state law primarily affects producers of packaging materials and requires them to pay a fee for waste management. And the city code requires certain businesses to reduce the use of petroleum products and requires the use of home compostable alternatives where applicable.
Thank you so much. I am so sorry, folks. I didn't see whose light went on first. Councilmember Murawaki?
I don't know if I was first, but thank you. All right. Yeah. Thanks for the presentation. I'm reading the overall review. It simply, it says that right there. The state law primarily affects producers of packaging materials and requires them to pay for fees of waste management. So it's really focused at where the source comes from. So really, I, and as Zero Waste just mentioned earlier, this isn't, there's no, there's no overlap or regulation or anything on the state law that would affect what we do. And we're, we're in a lot more detail than what the state laws require. And so I just find the table interesting. And I'm glad that we're doing our job here.
Thanks, Councilmember Murawaki. Councilmember Fantry Johnson, then Dietz, then Schneider.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I guess I just was saying the same thing, that it, unless I'm missing something, does it seem like what we're doing, what, what the state has enacted really does not affect us because they're only talking about people who create these type of wares?
Correct. Yep. That's my understanding.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure of that.
Was it you or Councilmember Schneider?
I, I can go. Okay, go ahead. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Laura. Trying to look at the, good, good, solid research. Thank you. Well, I'll just say, I, I brought this up. I admit it. Because when the state law came through, I, it was very, it's a very ambitious law. And it's like, what, we are one of five states to, to have such a law? And I, I thought this is a good time for us to step back and take a look at our ordinance and see. Because I, I like to think that if the state law was first, so to speak, would we have done our ordinance? And I think that's a fair question. I'm not sure if we would have. But we did, of course, didn't know the state law was going to come into effect last May. So, so then we did, of course, move forward, which is fine. I, I just don't like to see any more regulation than we need, frankly. And I know our businesses have been under some stress with this ordinance. So I think this is, bears a conversation to have is how the efficacy of this ordinance relating to the state law. And it sounds like, Laura, now correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like that this addresses the compostable materials, our ordinance, so to speak, that the state does not. I'm trying to find, what do we do that the state does not? And if you could just say that in a very general sense.
What we're doing is requiring food service businesses to serve to-go food in home compostable packaging material. And what the state is doing is requiring producers of any packaging to pay a fee to pay for the end, the recycling of it in the end.
So if there was a fee paid by, under the state law, could one expect that there would be compostable materials used at the consumer level or not? It seems like if there's a fee, there would be an incentive to move towards that. Isn't that sort of the point?
Yeah, that's like a choice at the local level.
Yeah.
To choose to purchase compostable.
So anyway, I was, I was going to ask that maybe the Climate Change Advisory Committee review this. But I, I think maybe with your analysis, maybe we're good for now. But I'd like to flag this because, you know, first, first off, the state law doesn't come into effect till twenty-thirty. So we got, you know, nothing's going to happen till then. So we can continue as we do. But I, I, I think we need to keep an eye on this because this, as we know, the history of this ordinance, there was a considerable strain on our local businesses and, and we had to make some adjustments. And I think we just need to be mindful that, knowing also that there's a really great state law coming through. So let's not duplicate efforts any more than we have to, but while reducing our waste. So I'm not going to make the, the motion that I told my colleagues I was going to based on your analysis. But I do want to flag this for the future.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Next was, I think, Councilmember Schneider and then Councilmember Hytopolis.
Okay, I thought it was Councilmember Hytopolis. I'm sorry, could, I think I can do this without the, without the. So my question is, well, okay, so my analysis. Sorry, I know. She hiding? I have that effect on people.
She was on her way.
So my, my read of this is that the state is doing a really great thing of holding the producers of the packaging responsible. And on down the line, it's, or, or even maybe right away, it's going to make our businesses' jobs easier because it will provide them more options of the proper things to purchase, right? So, but we are definitely doing, we are requiring our, our businesses to reduce plastic waste specifically. And, and the Recycling Reform Act is holding producers accountable. What I didn't quite understand, and maybe there's one bullet point down here that maybe addresses, it's kind of hard to say. So for the producer in row, I don't know, five or six, design packaging materials to improve waste reduction, reuse, and recycling outcomes. So what I don't understand from that, and I don't think it apply, it, it doesn't matter. I, I still see the benefit in having our ordinance. But what I wonder is, you know, is there a lesser fee that a packaging producer needs to pay if they're doing the right thing? You know, if they're producing backyard compostables or something like that? I assume that that's in there, that, but anyway, I see these as working together. And the, the state is going to be making our small businesses' lives easier by providing better choices. Thank you. Thanks, Councilmember Schneider. Councilmember Hytopolis.
Well, I, I don't see any relationship at all between the two, either who's regulated or what's being regulated. So I think that our ordinance continues to be very significant in its own right. And I would just add that it's, although the whereas is, some of the, I was looking back at past drafts, and there were some more whereas's about bioplastic that didn't make it through because they didn't need to because we don't have bioplastic composting on the island. We just left it with, we don't have that. But one of the drivers was also the fact that bioplastic is kind of a joke. I mean, it's, you know, even if you have commercial compostability, it's still filled with chemicals. It can still create microplastic-type outcomes. So the point is, it's not only to reduce, our, our ordinance wasn't just directed at reducing or eliminating the use of petroleum-based packaging, but also eliminate the use of bioplastic on the island as well. So I think our ordinance is doing something very important. And I don't see that the state has produced anything yet that would, that would suggest that they're covering that ground.
Thanks, Councilmember Hytopolis. Yes, I agree with my colleagues. Thank you so much, Laura, for your presentation and your summary that they go well together. So I think these complement each other well. Our community was really a leader in this. It was hard. It was not diff, it was not easy, and I think we're there. So I, it would just be very strange to go backwards. Now, as far as helping our business community, there are so many ways that we can do that. And that is a conversation I would love to have. Okay, so now we are on to conduct close, oh, no, I skipped us. Oh, yeah. Conduct closed record proceeding and consider adoption of resolution twenty-two-five fourteen.
Yes, Mayor, the planning director will present this to you in basically terms of closed record is that considerations that are on the record already in terms of conditions for the approval of this final plat subdivision. And the request for the council's ministerial action for the approval. And Ms. Charnas will go ahead and present this to you.
Thank you, City Manager. Again, good evening, City Council. Patty Charnas, Planning and Community Development. Thank you, City Manager, for that description and table setting. I don't really need to have this slide because he said it all. Next slide, please. The timeline has been fairly straightforward. The hearing examiner issued decisions with conditions in twenty-twenty-one. And you approved phase one of the final, of phase one final plat, December twenty-twenty-two. And then other work happened on phase two. And we're here before you with the final plat for final approval. Next slide, please. Just to orient you, phase two, phase one in red was approved December twenty-twenty-two. And we are now talking about the area in yellow. Next slide, please. The area has forty-three total lots, fourteen lots designated for permanent affordable housing. Next slide. So in our code, as well as in a state law, approval has to happen provided that the conditions of the hearing examiner are substantially met. And you have a lot of attachments for this agenda item. But that's the nature of final plats, including a compliance notation report. And the bonds and other assurances have been attached regarding landscaping, utilities, and other assurances. Finally, we've noted that the other requirements, state law, municipal code, et cetera, have also been met. Last slide, please. So the motion before you is to adopt a resolution that approves the final plat of phase two, final long subdivision or final plat, in substantially the form that's included with this agenda item. Thank you for your consideration.
First, I want to go to our city attorney, James Haney.
Yes, just a couple of preliminary matters related to this. First, as the planning director has indicated, there are three criteria for you to, to consider in approving this. If the criteria are met, you are required to approve the final plat. You can only disapprove the final plat if you can say that one of the three criteria are not met. Again, the three criteria are that the conditions of preliminary plat approval have been met, that bonds have been posted to assure completion of the improvements. And third, that the requirements of state law for final, and the city code for final plats have been met. The proceeding before you, as the City Manager said, is a closed record proceeding, which means you are not to take new testimony or evidence tonight. You are to decide it. You are to decide it based on the record that is before you. And that includes the hearing examiner's record and the documentation that the planning staff has provided. This, because this is a, a proceeding in which the property rights of an individual party are decided, this proceeding is subject to the appearance of fairness doctrine. We've talked about the appearance of fairness doctrine before. The appearance of fairness doctrine is intended to ensure that your decisions are not only fair in fact, but that they appear to be fair to a reasonable, fair-minded person who is observing these proceedings. The, as described in the governance manual, council members are required to disclose any interests that they or any family member may have that would appear to constitute a conflict of interest or show bias or prejudice. Council members are also required to disclose any ex parte communications, that is, communications from proponents or opponents of the project, doesn't include staff. But communications by proponents or opponents of the project regarding the particular project or the decision that is before you this evening, approval of the final plat. With that, there are three questions that the council has to be asked. If your answer is yes to any of these questions, then you need to disclose that as part of this proceeding. The first question is, do you or any family member have any personal interest in this matter that would limit your ability to be fair? Second, have you or any of you made up your mind as to this final long subdivision before you have reviewed the evidence in this proceeding? And lastly, do you, any of you or have any of you had ex parte communications that you need to disclose? If your answer to any of those questions are yes, you need to make those disclosures now. And then we proceed to determine whether there are any appropriate appearance of fairness challenges. So my first, my question to all of you is, are there any disclosures that need to be made based on that? Seeing some shaking of heads and not hearing any, anyone step forward with disclosures, then the question that needs to be asked at this point is whether any one who is here, any member of the public or any of the subdivider has any challenges that they wish to make to the council at this time. I see, I've heard audibly the people in the audience say, no, the subdivider's representatives. But I'll just note for the record that I have not seen anyone who wishes to raise a challenge. And with that, the council is free to decide this matter.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I'd like to move the recommended motion. I move to adopt resolution number 2025-14, approving the Wintergreen Townhomes Phase Two Final Long Subdivision in substantially the form as included with this agenda item.
A second.
And I'd like to speak just very briefly.
Well, motion, just going to, motion made by Deputy Mayor Quitsland, seconded by Council, by Councilmember Fantry Johnson. And.
Yes. The, there is a great deal of detail demonstrated in the attachments. The first fi, final sub compliance notation report by Jennifer Sutton, eight pages, 16 conditions to be met to the satisfaction of the city engineer and the planning and community development department. There are 10 sheets to the final plat survey. This is a big package and a great deal has been accomplished here. I think everything's in order and it's, it's good to reach this point.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. All those in favor. Seeing no opposition, we are on to our next agenda item, which is consider applying for Washington State Department of Commerce chip grant.
Yes, Mayor, they, you have stated the title correctly. The proposition for the councils, do you wish to authorize me to prepare a memorandum of understanding in pursuit of an application to the Washington Department of Commerce for the Connecting Housing to Infrastructure Program, the chip grant for the Finch Green Project in collaboration with Housing Resources Bainbridge. Housing Resources Bainbridge is proposing 100% affordable housing and 80% AMI project for 22 single-family homes that are two to three to four bedrooms. The chip grant provides funding for infrastructure costs up to $1 million if eligible. This is a new round of applications we have brought to you discussed before in previous rounds. Applications are due no later than September 26. The city is technically the applicant. We rely heavily upon our partner to provide us information. The city is eligible to apply in that we have met all the prerequisites that are required by Department of Commerce, such as having funding for housing is one of the prerequisites. The city administers the funds and the MOU lays out the terms of how we would process invoice and release reimbursement from Department of Commerce. The chip program has several requirements to monitor the progress of the project before they provide the contract for the grant. In this case, for this project, they would propose that they would be completing the project within the timeframe that Department of Commerce requires for this round of grants. We have successfully partnered with Housing Resources in the past for a chip grant and we feel we can do that again.
Councilmember Murawaki.
I just moved the motion. I move to authorize staff to prepare a memorandum of understanding for a connecting housing to, to, connecting housing to infrastructure program and apply for that grant. Application in collaboration with Housing Resources Bainbridge for the Finch Green Affordable Housing Project for approximately $1 million.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Seeing no opposition, that motion passes. Now we are on to another chip, chip. No, I should not say chip. You reminded me, Councilmember Murawaki, connecting housing to infrastructure program.
Yes, Mayor, yes, indeed. I will not say that word again because that's four words that I am reaching my word count for the evening. We again are asking the council if you wish us to enter into an MOU, this time for phase two of the Wintergreen Project. The phase two consists of 43 units, 29 market rate and 14 affordable units, 80% of AMI. We have contact, by the way, Department of Commerce to see if we could submit from the city of Bainbridge Island, multiple grant applications. They have said that we are eligible to do that. But they also point out that each grant application is evaluated on its own merits. It is a competitive program. We have discussed briefly with the development group, costs that may be eligible. And there is a window of time. Department of Commerce indicates that the costs have to be incurred after July 1 of 2025 and then the project be completed. In this case, the project is expected to be completed in mid-2026, which would meet the requirements of this round of the chip grant. And with that, ask the council whether we can enter into an MOU for the purposes of submitting a chip grant for the second phase of the Wintergreen Project.
Thanks, City Manager. Council, Councilmember Fantry Johnson.
I'm going to move the motion. I move to authorize the city manager to prepare a memorandum of understanding and apply for a chip grant application in collaboration with Central Highland Homes for the Wintergreen Phase Two 32% Affordable Housing Project for approximately $287,000.
A second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Fantry Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Murawaki. All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
And no opposition. That also passes. Thank you. And now we are on to adopt ordinance 2025-25, extending the sunset provision for bonus floor area ratio.
That's like a, a planning director, Charnas, to offer a very brief explanation of what we're doing here. And that's basically an extension of a ordinance that would be set to expire unless the council extends it. And the, the basic point is, we thought that the comprehensive plan and Winslow Sub area plan would be done by this point in time. And it would make the current ordinance obsolete. And therefore we would not need to extend the ordinance to impound the provisions of the ordinance for a period of time. And the planning director explained that a little further.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Last time, Patty Charnas, Planning and Community Development. Thank you, City Council, for your consideration tonight. Ordinance number 2025-25, which continues the limitation that was originally passed in 2021 on achieving bonus floor area ratio, which is a kind of density bonus for certain developments, particularly commercial developments. This ordinance from 2021 has been extended several times, allowing for work on the comprehensive plan Winslow Sub area plan to proceed without any confusion. The motion before you allows the ordinance to, the option to maintain the status quo for development standards in the Winslow mixed-use zoning districts that have been in place since August 2021. However, the bonus floor area ratio provisions would still be available to affordable housing and to relocating, if a, also in the Ferry District, if relocating surface parking to underground or underbuilding parking were to be part of a project. So those are the only two provisions that still remain as this limitation would be extended. We're requesting extension to May 2026, which is a healthy amount of time to not only complete the plan updates, but also work on implementing development regulations. Thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Director Charnas. Councilmember Fantry Johnson.
I'm not sure if there's a error in the motion, but I'm going to read it. I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-25, extending ordinance number 2021-10 for nine months until June 10, 2026.
Second, second. Comment?
Okay.
Just for someone of my age, someone I get this, 2525, if man's still alive. Those who know the song know what I'm talking about.
Councilmember Fantry Johnson, seconded by, was it you? Who's seconded? By Deputy Mayor Quitsland. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, Director Charnas. Okay, last but not least, we're going to consider appointments to the Cultural Funding Task Force. First of all, I just would have to say what great folks we interviewed. It was just a pleasure to get to spend some time with them. We are really, really lucky to have such great volunteers.
Yeah. Five is the number we wanted and five is the number we got. Very, very good.
Exactly.
I move to confirm the recommended appointment of Adrian Wolf to the Cultural Funding Task Force for the 2025-26 funding cycle.
Motion made by Deputy Mayor Quitsland, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor.
Aye.
I move to confirm the recommended appointment of Jill Krasinski to the Cultural Funding Task Force for the 2025-26 funding cycle.
Motion made by Deputy Mayor Quitsland, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I move to confirm the recommended appointment of Becky Allen to the Cultural Funding Task Force for the 2025-26 funding cycle.
Second.
Motion made by Council, by Deputy Mayor Quitsland and seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
I move to confirm the recommended appointment of John Carson to the Cultural Funding Task Force for the 2025-26 funding cycle.
Motion made by Deputy Mayor Quitsland, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor.
Aye.
I move to confirm the recommended appointment of Charles Sharp to the Cultural Funding Task Force for the 2025-26 funding cycle.
Motion made by Deputy Mayor Quitsland, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, Council.